Okay, I might call this meeting to order. Mr. Hollinsworth give us the invocation and the pledge of the flag.
Bow our heads.
Lord.
Thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done for us. It's National Prayer Day, so we hope everybody's taking advantage of that. We want to pray for some of the folks here in town, my good friend and all our friends, Ricky Crawford. He's dealing with some sickness and we hope he comes out of it. Make his family's doing everything they can and so are his friends. I want to pray for the young lady's family that drowned. That was a sad day and it's something that you just don't see coming in your life. And a child's death is always a terrible thing. And I want to pray for the county commission up here. We're dealing with some things in Tallahassee and dealing with what we have to deal with. I assure you that we take this job very seriously and we try to do the right thing for the people of Columbia County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome each and every one to take the time out of their day to come here on a Thursday morning. It's kind of encouraging to see this many people in the crowd. At this time, do we have any deletions or have you from the agenda staff?
No, sir.
Move with your approval, Jim.
Second.
Got a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, proclamation, Joel, if you would, do the first one of foster care. You got it?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Proclamation number 2025 P dash 11, National Foster Care Month. Whereas May is National Foster Care Month, a time to recognize that all of us can play a role in improving the lives of children in our community and work to provide the brightest future possible for our most cherished citizens. And whereas, beginning in 1988, US presidents have issued annual proclamations in recognition of May being National Foster Care Month. And whereas in Florida, there are over 8,000 children in foster care and here in Columbia County, we have an average of 95 children in foster care at any given time. And whereas the goal of foster care is family reunification, as we know that healthy families raise healthy kids who go on to lead healthy lives. And whereas foster families are members of the community who open their homes to children of all ages with all sorts of unique backgrounds and situations, but recognize that all children have a common need for love, stability, and support as they grow. And whereas while these situations can be difficult, having strong community support drastically increases the success of the foster care system and ultimately leads to health and healing for those children and their families. And whereas supporting foster care can take on many forms to include attending an orientation to learn about becoming a foster parent, volunteering or financially supporting local nonprofits that serve foster kids and their families, providing a meal or letter of encouragement for a foster family, coaching and volunteering for programs that have foster kids participating to provide an additional example of a healthy role model in caring adult in the lives of these kids. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida do hereby proclaim May as National Foster Care Month in Columbia County and encourage all citizens to lead the way for other communities and how we work together to utilize our resources and unique giftings to help support our community's foster children, foster families, and biological families. So proclaim this first day of May, 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida.
Okay, board, the got a motion to accept proclamation?
Yes, sir.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And it looks like we got some guests here and whoever wants to start first, feel free to.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Amanda and I'm Director of Development and Engagement for Partnership for Strong Families. And I am just honored to be here and thank you so much for your support that you have shown our foster families over the many, many years that we have been here and also for helping us with our prevention efforts. And I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Phil Mobley.
Good morning. It is then a wonderful and it's a pleasure to be here again before you honorable commissioners. And we just want to thank again Columbia County and all that you do to help support our efforts. Foster kids and foster families are something that is something that my, my part of the agency is trying to prevent. North Star, we know that the trauma a child suffers when they go into foster care is that trauma they will never, ever, ever forget. And so what the prevention model is to be able to prevent kids from ever having to go into that system. But if that kid find themselves or family find themselves in the foster care, we Partnership for Strong Families want to do the best that we could do to help take care of those kids. And if God forbid, to reunify them back into a safe and successful home. That's what our mission is. And we constantly thank you for all the support you give us and especially the support you've given to North Star Family Support Centers. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. There you go. Let me give you a presentation here and then ladies take the picture. We thank y'all for doing all what y'all do and taking care of the children. Okay, now I'll read the proclamation, excuse me. Proclamation 2025 P dash 12, National Travel and Tourism Week, 2025 proclamation. Whereas the travel industry is essential to the success of every industry and will continue to be critical part of Columbia County's economy, development, and workforce. Whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with an economic output of $2.9 trillion, supporting 15 million American jobs. Whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in Florida and across the United States by generating $89 billion in state and local tax revenue in 2024 to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. Whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operation that power out the economy and our nation of Columbia County. Whereas Columbia County tourism employs more than 2,800 people and tourists spend over 200 million in local businesses. Whereas America's travel industry cannot be globally competitive without maximizing growth in leisure, business, and international inbound travelers, increasing travel to and with the United States. Drives our economy to a more prosperous future and connects America. Whereas one in every 11 US jobs depend on travel, making it a critical driver of America's economy and force for connection and opportunity. Whereas travel is an essential industry and we will, we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, fostering mutual understanding, and connects the nation. Therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May 4th, 10, 2025 as National Travel and Tourism Week in Columbia County and urge the citizens of Columbia County to join me in recognizing the essential role this industry plays in Columbia County. Attest James Swisher, Tim Murphy, Commissioner. I'll need a motion.
I made a motion, we approve 2025 P dash 12.
Got a motion, got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Clint, and there's the A-team right there, so I knew they were going to come get the pictures. And if, uh, we should pay close attention to stop getting nothing here, gonna.
Michelle.
Here to then the, uh.
Want your board members up here?
In the newspaper and what have you. This, uh, act going in Tallahassee. We need to fight this, uh, tourism bed tax.
Commissioners, thank you very much for, uh, for reading this proclamation and as Commissioner Murphy just mentioned, you're going to hear some stuff about TDC later on. Uh, I think this proclamation pretty much says it all when it comes to tourism and what's going on with the TDC in the state. And, uh, so we need to pay close attention to that. But this group that just left up here taking this picture, I've got a great team. Kylie's our new office manager that was up here with Michelle, so we welcome Kylie to our team. But again, thank y'all for recognizing this and, uh, we'll have more discussion when it comes to the TDC funds. Thank you.
Clint, real quick before you leave, just in landscapes and parks, I've been sharing this number, just the effects of the bed tax, if you would, a 30-second overview, how that would impact our, our budget. You know, it would what you guys do.
Well, just, just in the landscape and parks department, approximately $400,000 from TDC funding goes into my department, which helps us do a higher level of maintenance for the tournaments and for the events that come into the county. So if we start dipping in the TDC funds, it's a snowball effect. It's going to affect several things across the county, not just one department. You know, we just received two national awards here in the past two years, back to back, which is pretty unheard of for small rural counties. Without that TDC money and the partnership from our advertising and marketing firms for our area and our brand marketing, you know, we don't, we don't get recognized for that stuff. So TDC money gets dipped into and changed around. It affects everything across the county, not, not just one department.
Well, we appreciate it and the, uh, I'm not going to steal Stas' thunder, but he'll share some numbers with you to tell the effect of what it really would help the taxpayers and it's, it's, uh, it's, it's not much.
Thank you.
Thank Clint.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Goff. Upcoming is Jennifer, she's the Economic Development Director. She's looking for help.
I haven't recorded all of them.
Good morning, board. So piggybacking on the presentation from tourist development, we are continuing Economic Development Week once again this year. Last year was our inaugural week and it was a success. I would say this year, we're approaching a little bit different tactics because we learned very early on from Rural Counties Day, partnering with tourist development and IFAS Extension Office as well as the Chamber for these type of events makes so much more sense because they are so intertwined, right? Tourist development, economic development go hand in hand. So it just so happened that the two weeks were right by each other this year and they corresponded with Small Business Week. So we decided to partner all three and really focus on each, each industry, each sector of the county departments and how they work together and how they work for the community. So just a couple of highlights of what's coming up next week. First, we have our kickoff on Monday. It's a fiesta for development, commerce, and tourism, being that it's Cinco de Mayo. We're keeping with the theme. It is open to the public. We ask that, that you register ahead of time. Invitation only from 4:30 to 5:30, 5:30 to 6:30, open to the public. Again, registrations please. The information's on the Chamber website and the Chamber's been sending it out to their membership and above. So again, this is an opportunity for the three individual departments to come together and present what we do and how we support the county. So it gives the public a chance to kind of interact with us and learn a little bit about what we do, you know, face to face and hands on. Tuesday is our Taste of Tourism. Clint has, has graciously offered or accepted to welcome us out to Alligator Park for a tour of the facility out there. So we'll have a brief walking tour. They give a presentation about how the, the parks inside of the county drive tourism and again, how that ties into economic development. Once again, registrations free to the public, but we, we would like registrations for headcount purposes. Wednesday, we have a celebration of partnerships. This is tourism and economic development at its finest. We'll have a behind the scenes look at what it takes to open up a new hotel, how to run a hotel, the business that, that goes behind the planning of that. So, um, Mr. Patel at, at the Town Place Suites has offered to host this event for us on Wednesday and give us a behind the scenes look. Again, free to the public, but we ask that you register. Thursday, very excited to announce, we, at, at long last, we'll be having a ribbon cutting ceremony. The wastewater treatment plant that has been finally completed out on 90 East at the industrial park. This wastewater plant has, as everybody knows, has been a work in progress for quite some time. And while it is at the industrial park, is there to spur growth in the entire eastern side of the county and in partnership with the city. So for this, um, registration is, is, you know, we, we would like that, not required. It is open to the public. We ask that you start arriving around 9:30. We're going to begin very promptly at 10 with the, the ceremony itself. But again, um, this is a, a good day, a celebration for a lot of people beyond our county border. So I hope you can attend. And then finally on Friday, we're going to wrap up with a fantastic keynote speaker. Shelley Phelps is the Chamber of Commerce Director at Wheatonka, Alabama. If you've ever watched the show on HGTV, Save My Town, she was integral in getting Wheatonka on the map. They're in the middle of nowhere. They're on a river, the, the base of a mountain. Actually, it's a crater that was created by a meteor. But, you know, they, when the, the interstates came through, a lot of their tourism followed the interstate. So they were drying up and they were dying. She tells a fantastic story of how the community came together, put them back on the map, started driving tourism, development, growth, but they're doing it in a way that they haven't lost who they are as a community. So really fantastic speaker. I think you'll be very impressed with some of the information that she shares. And again, all of this is in partnership with the, the IFAS, with tourist development and with the Chamber. Want to say anything else? I see a question. No. Oh, any, any questions, any, any, any comments about? It will be a busy week, but you know, we're, we're looking forward to it. We've had a lot of positive feedback from last year and coming into this year. And I think this is giving us some ideas on how we can build it, make it even bigger and better next year, continuing the partnership with TDC and IFAS.
Any questions from the board or anybody?
Thank you as much.
Before we move on to Stas' presentation, I just recognize her sitting in the shadows back there, but hotel owners, operators, if y'all don't mind, please just stand up. We'd like to recognize y'all taking time to come. I see one lady's face got red back here, but these are some of our local motel owners and operators and we appreciate what y'all do for the community and what you do for the TDC. We, uh, uh, thank you for coming out and supporting us. I really do. I wish I'd seen y'all earlier, we'd have got the picture. You, you want your picture from my hundred? Thank you, man. All right, Stas.
Good morning. Today is day 59 of the 2025 legislative session and it's not been a normal one. So let's dive into this. So tourism development, that's been the hot topic of today. The current House tax package would abolish the TDCs as we know it unless it, we could still have a tourism department if created under chapter 125, which is what authorizes counties to have certain departments and responsibilities and functions. If the board of a county allows a county department to only advertise, they can use some of the money for public use. The other component of this is that the counties will be required to lower property taxes to the same amount of what is brought in from the TDC tax. Currently, we would be required, as it's written right now, would be required to spend 75% for general purposes and we'd have to bring down the money, a, a minimum 75%. We'd have to bring down property taxes based on what is brought in from the, from the TDC, the tax. But this is not on the Senate's side. This is one of the main points of contention between the House and the Senate. So we have all this written down on the House side. It is not written on the Senate side. This is one of the big components that's, that's a separation between the two chambers. Does anybody have any questions about the TDC before I move on to other issues?
Stas, if you don't mind, share with the crowd what you did with me when you got with Jeff.
So I, I wanted, I double checked that, that math. So let's say you were to take 75% of the revenue and divide it up, let's say over all the homesteaded properties in the county as a tax break. That would be roughly $98.83. If you were to take all the 100% of money and divide it up, and I'm just doing homestead for, for illustrative purposes, $131.78 per property, that would be your tax break from the current roughly, I think, 2.2 million that we get of TDC revenue. That was based off of last year's number.
Mr. Chair. That does represent a loss of revenue to the county of $2.2 million.
So we would have to lower our millage rate to, to match that. So it's not a revenue supplement, it's a replacement.
Well, it's just like Mr. Pittman said, the trickle down effect is what is amazing to me and it doesn't, you know, some of the sessions that's going on over there just doesn't make good sense.
Yeah, and I, I think it's written in that resolution, a 200 million impact, so.
You know, Stas.
Go ahead.
Um. I know that everybody on this board is for lower property taxes because we, we rolled back miller rate about three years ago, so I know we're for that. And I just, I don't know what they're doing in Tallahassee. There's, I think there's seven bills related to this kind of stuff.
Yeah, I, I'll get to that later.
Yeah, okay. There's so much you got to get to. I guess I'll wait on all that. But, but anyhow, we'll talk about it when you get done telling us the bad news. So I, I, I hear this rural renaissance sound like rural degradation to me.
That's, that's in here too.
Maybe that's what the name would be.
So the, the live local, so for good on TDC, I'm going to go to the live local part. A couple of months ago, this board passed a resolution to opt us out of the tax exemption part of live local. It was a, the repealer bill for that was a standalone bill, but it was rolled into the House tax package last minute. We didn't think. I had met with the representative who had that bill and I explained to her from a fiscally constrained point of view, some of these projects would take a lot of infrastructure money to spend that we didn't have, that wasn't budgeted. So that, that was, you know, one of those things. She, she was very receptive, but it was, it was rolled into the House tax package. So if that were to pass, let's say, if, if that's the big if, nothing's set in stone, if that were to pass, we would only, we would not be able to allow us to renew that opt out again. So the one currently in place would be fine, the one that we, we wouldn't be able to renew when it comes to time. Utility relocation, uh, this bill seemed very problematic at the start, particularly for small and rural counties. Originally, the bill would have required us to pay for internet broadband cables if we required them to be moved for road projects. The bill got significant attention. Many worked on it. We worked on it, uh, Florida Association of Counties, Small County Coalition, a lot of people did. And, but the bill now, in its current state, will allocate about 7.5% of the communication service tax statewide to a fund at the Department of Commerce and the providers will then go to the Department of Commerce to get reimbursed rather than we would have to pay anything. So I think our, our communication service tax will decrease slightly. It won't be as detrimental. Moving on, the term limits died in the Senate. That's not a nonstarter as of right now this morning. The sovereign immunity increase cap, that, that died as well. Agricultural land preemption, if you'd saw some things on Facebook about preemption of rural boundaries and, and what you can do on zoned agriculture land, that part was taken out completely. There was just a couple other requirements that we have to follow regarding, you know, zoning, make sure your application's done in a timely manner. And if not, then we have to refund part of your application feedback, little things like that. And hopefully we don't have to, to be in that situation. But that, that's all that was left of that bill, so I'm not really worried about that. The rural renaissance package, uh, was, was passed, and this is where it gets a little hairy. At, and on the House side, it was split up into three different bills. So it was passed in one bill in the Senate. Everything, you know, that was great, we wanted, was in there, got to the House. It was split up into three different bills. And then they combined the bill again, put other things that the Senate did not want. Anyway, they pushed the bill back to the Senate. The Senate, as of yesterday afternoon, refused to concur and then now it's back in the House chamber. So hopefully the House, if they accept it, then the bill passes. If they deny the concurrence, then the bill dies, which is not what we wanted because that fiscally constrained definition was in, in the midst of all that. The community, the CRAs, I, I know we don't have one, but the community redevelopment agencies, that's in flux right now. That was tied to the big, uh, that was lumped in the rule, the Renaissance bill. Again, if the House doesn't take up the concurrence, then it's dead.
Mr. Chair, just as a reminder, the city of Lake City has three CRA districts in Columbia County, which means they have the tax increment financing, which means taxes charged by the county are set at the date the district was created and any increase in value goes to the CRA district. These are eliminated, that would eliminate that.
Yeah, and, and so the, it really got, you know, I, I know that's, it's an issue for the city, but for us, that fiscally constrained definition got lumped in with the CRAs. And there was disagreements between the chambers on the CRAs and, and how that, you know, the, the, the final wordage and then unfortunately the, the back and forth, the ping pong between chambers. That's, that's why it threatened, threatened what we wanted. So a lot of, a lot of ping ponging right now. As the, going on to the last issue here, I have RV parks, which was written into the tax package. I believe, David, correct me if I'm wrong, we currently only tax per unit, I believe.
The property value as a whole was taxed at the property value rate, but then each side is taxed as a per lot side.
Yeah, per lot.
On the assessments.
They actually called us out as one of the counties that didn't like it. We tried to track down why and how this was said, but apparently I guess some folks at the, the RV Association or the Campground Association got upset, I guess, by the way we changed our, the way we, we deal with them about a year or so ago. Now they would only be taxing on occupancy rather than per unit. So again, that's on the House side. It's not on the Senate side, so.
I got a question.
Yes.
What, what amount of money are we taxing? Do you know?
I don't know offhand for that one.
Are they talking about, are they talking about like if you stay less than six months, they're talking about that, that occupancy tag?
What they would do is they would, would need to do more research on that, um, to give you an exact answer.
There ain't a lot of taxes being paid.
No.
I don't know what.
But it's just, it's just the.
I mean, it's a hundred dollars a year. I don't want anyone to take 35 of it.
It's a different way. It's, it's the mechanism.
So right now you have a per lot rate, but they can put in a vacancy rate and the tax collector. And the tax collector often calculates based on what they swear their, they certify what their vacancy rate is, they reduce their tax burden by that vacancy rate. And that's all handled in the tax collector's office.
So they're gonna reduce their tax burden, am I right?
So I, I think those are the biggest, like, policy issues that we've really, you know, worked on, tracked and and, and saw go through this session or not go through. The second component of this presentation is the budget. So as of right now, there will not be a budget voted on by tomorrow. Senator Hooper, the appropriations chairman, said that the legislature is most likely gonna come back, in, in his view, gonna come back later this month or even next month, depending on if they can negotiate. The, the top-line allocations from general revenue hadn't even been numbered yet, which usually we get, okay, the pot of money we got from general revenue, how we're gonna divide it up among the silos, then the silo chairs go through the budget and, and hammer out what they want, net each silo's education, roads, et cetera. And then anything that's not agreed upon in those silos are then bumped up to the House chair and the Senate chair, and then bumped up to the presiding officers, and then that's when the budget's produced. So we're not even at step one. The Senate proposal's a hundred and seventeen billion, the House proposal's a hundred and twelve, the governor wanted a hundred and fifteen, somewhere in the middle. But our projects, the Swanee Valley Tower is still alive and the Ellisville Water Project for the Utility Authority is still alive as well. So even though we don't have a number yet, we don't have a, the, a finished budget product, we still have our projects have some kind of a placeholder in the meantime, which is, which is a good thing. So that's a bit of good news. There's just a lot of, there's a huge gulf between the Senate and the House on the tax package, and that's what's the, the largest point of contention. So that, that session, or the summary of session, and I'm gonna go into the next session. On Tuesday, Speaker Perez announced a select committee on property taxes. And they will meet through the summer and the autumn of this year, and the speaker noted that there will be property tax reform from the House side passed in the first week of the 2026 legislative session. Now, I, I believe that if I read everything correctly, that these items have to be on the ballot, or if not most of them. The House proposed, or the speaker proposed, five items. They will require every city and county, special district, to hold a referendum on the general election on the question of eliminating property taxes on homesteaded properties. Number two, create a new five hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption, increase the exemption to one million for those over sixty-five and for those who have been in their homes for thirty years or more. And these exemptions would apply to all non-school taxes. Number three, authorize the legislature to increase homestead exemption by statute to any value as a matter of general law. And number four, change the limitation on assessment increases for homestead properties and non-homesteaded properties. Homestead from the lower of three percent of the increase in CPI each year to three percent over any given three-year period, or non-homestead from ten percent annually to fifteen percent for non-homestead. And the last component of this is eliminate the ability to foreclose on any homesteaded properties due to a property tax lien. These are the proposals that Speaker Perez had come up with. It is, again, this is not set in stone, this isn't a bill yet. The, the committee is still going to meet and then they're gonna meet in the next session, but this is what's been proposed and potentially coming down the pipe. So you do some math on that. The assessed value of homestead properties in Columbia County, I got this information from Mr. Hampton yesterday, was two point three billion dollars. You times, you divide that by a thousand times the mill rate, that's a fifteen point five million dollar amount, give or take. So the other two items for next session is, committee weeks start in October. We wanna meet with our delegation before the, the delegation meeting to start going over these priorities and start being in their ear regarding these issues, particularly the property tax issue. And also the hospital authority bill, which we talked about, but I guess the timing on that wasn't as, as correct, but I'm sure you all wanna bring that back again. So that, that's, those are the three categories, this policy, the budget and, and next session. Any questions?
Questions, both, anyway?
Robbie, you didn't have a finisher. You're just, you're just a strong guy.
I'm happy we ain't gonna get our property tax lowered. I'm ready.
Well, several years ago, I believe, Mr. Ford, you was there, we, we did away with the one year of trash assessment. That was two hundred something dollars. The only person that complimented me on it was my wife. Nobody else paid attention to it. So that ninety-eight dollars, I don't think is gonna make a big difference in Columbia County.
I get it. I would expect this rural renaissance is gonna make up for some of this, but I doubt it, so.
Well, it keeps.
Hey, I'm all for lower property taxes.
And the rural renaissance, you know, there, there's a lot of good things in there. Particularly, the most important thing for us is keeping, whilst property taxes are still around, keeping the our definition of what is fiscally constrained for, for quite a while, because that's where a significant amount of our revenue comes from.
Sounds like they picked the right year to have the rural renaissance.
Right. So hopefully, it, you know, the House will do the right thing and, and, and pass a lot of that rural renaissance package that we want. It's just, right now, I mean, session ends tomorrow at some point and all the policy stuff will be dead, but the, the appropriation stuff will still be alive until they rectify this and, and get a state budget. So it's not over yet.
Staus, have you ever seen a, have you ever seen a legislature in this situation before?
Not in my time. I know that there had been, maybe in the nineties, there probably was a lot of contention on some issues. I know, I know Lawton Charles had some disagreements, but.
He left in eighty-nine, so.
Yeah, so I, I probably think Lawton and Lawton had some, you know, disagreements with things, but.
Yes. Staus and I were looking at this this morning. According to our calculations, was, you could lose up to about fifty percent of your general fund revenues, ad valorem taxes through this process. And as you know, the majority of our ad valorem money goes towards the sheriff, law enforcement and essential services. So it would have a significant impact, which we won't know the answer
Right.
till a year from now or two years.
And I don't even know if non-ad valorem assessments would be included in this. I'm thinking so, but that would be another component. But then again, these are just proposals and, you know, from the speaker, so I'll take these proposals seriously. We don't know what the Senate's thinking, we don't know what other folks are thinking and what exactly the, the final product is going to be. But this is just something to, to keep in the back of your head as, as you're moving forward. And we start preparing for next session.
All right, Staus, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, David, we'll move on to you, the.
Well, this one's easy. The charter for the county requires us to present at the first meeting in May, the county manager evaluations. You all completed your evaluations. They're in the package and as such, we have completed our obligation to the charter.
All right, that's, doesn't need a vote of any sort, then move on to the public hearing, Dave.
We get into the fun stuff now. This is our second public hearing on the community development block grant application. This actually has the application that you would be applying for if the board so approves to move forward. As such, we have selected a, the housing rehabilitation option simply because there was not enough time to do a neighborhood revitalization or commercial revitalization project, given the short timeframe of this application. You are still allowed to do economic development applications anytime throughout the year, as long as funding is available. This does not preclude you from doing that. And the reason it's been such a compressed timeframe is they changed the rules. Previously, we would not have been eligible to apply. You're only allowed one at a time and we have one currently. They changed the rules, they lifted the cap, so you can ask for more money and you can have more than one application. So that's why this has come before you. As such, as you can see the matrix, and of course, Antonio's here, if you'd like to come up, Antonio. Oh, there he is, to actually talk about it. But as you can see, it is, we're, you would be requesting one point two two five million dollars, but you will have a match of fifty thousand dollars. And at this point, is there anything you wanna add?
Good morning. Once again, thank you for having me. You're probably tired of seeing my ugly mug. It's about thrice and a little more than a month now. This public hearing is basically just to inform you that a draft application has been completed as a part of your packet for review. And this public hearing, the second public hearing, I wanna make sure that that's clear, is the process mechanism utilized to inform the public of our potential application and applying for these FY, FY twenty-three, twenty-four CDBG funds in the housing rehabilitation category. As Mr. Krauf stated, potential NRS were discussed. He and I discussed potential NRS, neighborhood revitalization, commercial revitalization is, is not really applicable. We don't have a, a CRA in the county. I think they're all within the city limits. And then economic development just weren't at a readiness-to-recede state to apply right now. So the housing rehabilitation category gave us the best or highest probability of receiving funding during this open cycle. Again, this public hearing is also, we'll get into it a little bit later, is to allow the public to hear their fair housing rights, and that is a required step as a part of the application process. The breakout, as stated and listed in the chart there, is a million dollars for housing rehabilitation or demolition replacement. I think at our initial discussion to kick this off, we all agreed that there were some a need for additional housing assistance locally here, especially where, when it related to mobile homes and the demolition and replacing them with single-family homes if, if possible. A part of that funding is fifty thousand dollars in temporary relocation. That allows us, if we are demolishing and replacing homes, those folks will have to, of course, they can't be in the home if we tear it down, so we would need some way to assist them at least minimally with their expenses from being temporarily displaced. And then administration funding in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that allows us to pay for the administration of the grant. And then, as Mr. Krauf stated, there'd be a fifty thousand dollar leverage. That is not absolutely required, but it is strongly encouraged because it increases your application score. If we look at the, the history of scoring, our last grant was the FY nineteen twenty funding cycle. Our score here in Columbia County was six hundred and sixty-nine point sixty-four points. And the range that year for housing was eight hundred and sixty-two point eight-three points on the top end and five hundred and ninety-one point oh point, point oh one points on the low end. For the previous cycle in which we didn't apply, at least for housing or any other small cities grant through Florida Commerce, for twenty-one, twenty-two, that range was from eight hundred to five seventy-seven point oh seven. That is what they call the fundable range. As you can see, each year, especially if you have repeat applications, those funding scores will drop a little bit. It is projected right now, looking at the application, that our score will range between five twenty and six twenty plus in that housing category. So that would put us in the fundable range for each of the past two years as it relates to housing. This particular process, again, allows for public comment, B O C C comment. And if approved, here today, a final draft copy of the application would have to be made available to the public. They can do so. Public can reach out to the county manager's office and pick up an actual physical copy at the county administration building, or they can contact my office, eight 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 four eight two seven three nine three, or reach out to me directly and we can provide them a copy of that final draft application. Again, that is a required part of the process. That's about all I have there.
All right, just for clarity, before you open it to the public, we are only eligible for this grant for the unincorporated areas of the county. It does not include the city of Lake City or any incorporated cities, and that's per regulation.
Pretty much everything other than Fort Wyden, city of Fort Wyden, city of Lake City.
Incorporated city, we cannot fund that out.
Correct. Those folks have the opportunity to apply for their own independent funding through the same processes. As a part of the process, going along with the application approved, and I think this is a little bit down the road here on the agenda, but there has to be attached a local housing, a housing assistance plan. There are two types of housing assistance plan. There's the local housing assistance plan, which is attached to ship, and then there's just the regular housing assistance plan, which is attached to CDBG. Ours will be the housing assistance plan. We've made some changes to that. It is almost identical to our previous version of the policy that you approved for our current open housing grant. Additional changes were made based off our comment at the, of comments from our initial meeting as it relates to applying for CDBG. And it allows for the demolition and replacement of those homes. And that language was included in the housing assistance plan changes that would go along with this application. The most prominent of those changes can be found on page fifty-two of that housing assistance plan. I won't read it. I know you'll have a chance to read it. But also, follow-up language was on page thirty, thirty-two, forty-four, forty-five and fifty-one. Those were all the language changes and they were related to the demolition and replacement of mobile homes and the cost, the not-to-exceed cost associated with that. And at that particular point, I will push up and see if there are any questions.
Dave, before I open it up real quick, on the fifty thousand dollar match is, when you have to demolish a home, is that, if you do it in-house, is that considered?
Using kind contribution.
Correct. It's an in-kind contribution that can be spread. It doesn't necessarily have to be attached to one particular home. We can use it via a number of different homes. It is typically based on need for a particular project, and it's usually the project that is going to require some additional ADA additions to the home, or if there's some bad septic or something like that, or if we can connect into a utility, those ones are usually attached to that particular project. However, it may fall, depending on the applications and the applicants and those who are qualified to participate in the program.
And it's fifty thousand for the total one point two.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Board, any questions before the public hearing on this? At this time, I declared a public hearing open. Is there anybody to hear to speak for or against this grant application? Not seeing none, I'd declare a public hearing closed. Board, what's the wishes of the board?
I think we approve FY two thousand twenty-three and FY two thousand twenty-four grant application.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
So as advertised in the newspaper, our next item is a public hearing on the Fair Housing Workshop. I'm gonna turn it over to Antonio again. He's gonna go through his slides. And then we can open it up to the public and.
I never knew how to work these things, so again, forgive me. This is a part of the grant application process. We have to make a public declaration of fair housing, saying that the county is a fair housing entity. Again, this is a part of the, I always miss that. The Fair Housing Act, the Fair Housing Act Title Eight, Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, was established to protect people from discrimination when purchasing or renting a property as a residence. It says that we have adopted a fair housing ordinance, which we have. And everything is in accordance with Florida Chapter seven sixty of the Florida statutes. And this is required, again, to receive a CDBG grant award. It is illegal to discriminate based on the race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap or familial status when renting, selling or financing a home or a property. You have rights if you feel have been discriminated against when you are buying or renting a home. At the end of this presentation, we'll give you contact information through HUD in which you should be able to reach out. Also, on your county website, there is a fair housing contact that is listed there. Who is not protected, discrimination based on the following factors are not covered by the Fair Housing Act, marital status, sexual orientation, source of income, criminal history, including sexual offenders and juvenile offenders, non-recovering uses of illegal substances. It excludes an owner-occupied building. It excludes an owner-occupied building up to four units, a home sold or rented to the owner as long as he or she does not own more than three homes or use a real estate agent or has not sold a home in the last twenty-four months, a housing development operated by an organizational club, a qualified housing development for fifty-five-plus adults. Examples of discrimination: refuse to rent or sell a home to a person who falls into one or more of the following protected classes, and being in these classes is the basis for the refusal to rent, sell, et cetera, of a home; tell you a housing is unavailable, a housing unit is unavailable when in fact it is available; deny a person with children under the age of eighteen a specific unit in an apartment building for which he or she has otherwise qualified; discriminate against residents because of the disability associated with them; associated means children, parents, friends, spouses, roommates, patients, et Continued examples of discrimination: advertise housing to be preferred groups of people only; threaten, coerce, intimidate, or interfere with someone who is advocating for his or her fair housing rights; impose different terms or conditions in a mortgage or loan; make an assumption about your ability to pay based only on your race or national origin; note a bank does not have to loan you money if you cannot show that you can repay that loan; ask a person with a disability to prove he or she can live independently. And this is, if you feel anyone in the audience, or anyone, the dice there, feel you've been discriminated, in any event, you can contact all of these particular contact places here is listed there. It's also in the agenda packets that you have. Any questions?
I have one. Did you say your last name is Mayo?
Jenkins.
Jenkins. They said, I thought you said Mayo.
Mayo's in my dish.
Jenkins.
He's not the one wanting to have a racetrack, okay?
They're all big fellows. I said, they're big fellows.
Okay. All right.
Joe, I guess we get over to this as a public hearing also, correct?
Yep. At this time, I open up a public hearing for the Fair Housing Workshop. Is anybody here to speak for or against? Again, not seeing none, I declare a public hearing closed. Motion from the board? Yeah, got a motion.
Motion.
Second. Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Approval to consent agenda.
I move that we approve consent agenda.
Got a motion. Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Move to adopt consent agenda. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. David, CDBG.
All right. So we now know, I get confused easily. As Antonio pointed out, I called it the Local Housing Assistance Plan because we do have a local housing assistance plan, but in fact, this is the Housing Assistance Plan. The Local Housing Assistance Plan is your ship. The Housing Assistance Plan is your CDBG. So please ignore where I say local housing assistance and call it as Housing Assistance Plan. So we're requesting to adopt a new housing assistance plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty to twenty-eight as required by the CDBG program. This new housing assistance program guides how you will implement the program. It includes things like the qualifications, selection criterias. As you can see from your packet, it's a fairly lengthy and detailed document. And the big change, as Antonio had said, is the replacement, demolition and replacement of mobile homes that was not previously in our housing assistance plan until last year. And as such, I'm asking you to approve the CDBG Housing Assistance Plan and Procedures for Fiscal Year twenty-five, twenty-eight. And if you have any questions for Antonio, he's still here.
One question. From last year to now, Antonio, is major changes?
Nothing major. The only, the only change of consequence is the mobile homes, instead of being able to be rehabilitated up to twenty thousand dollars, which doesn't really do us any good with most of the homes that we come across, and now are only required to be demolished and replaced. And again, that's either with site-built homes, single-family site-built homes, or where code or zoning may prohibit, we can put back an additional mobile home, which is now officially known as manufactured housing. They don't call them mobile homes anymore.
And match required here? I mean, on the CDB, is there any match here?
No, this is just your policies and procedures.
Okay, I got you.
How you're going to implement the program.
I understand. Okay.
So if somebody comes up, you can say, am I qualified? You say, here's the housing assistance plan, it tells you exactly.
Got you.
Yes, that fifty thousand match covers everything.
Covers everything, isn't it?
Everything.
Okay. All right. So, okay, does it need a motion on this? Anybody have a motion?
So move.
You got a motion?
Second.
Say, you got a motion and second? That's pretty good, there.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Any questions?
You want to be clear. You want to make sure the motion is to adopt the housing assistance plan. Commerce will call us out on that. We don't read out very few.
You want to read it out?
Yeah, we want to approve CDBG Local Housing Assistance Planning and Procedure for FFY two-zero-two-five.
Can we request a modification to the motion?
Yeah, before the second, strike the word local.
Yeah.
As per Mr. Kraus. So it will be approved CDBG Housing Assistance Plan.
Approved CDBG Housing Assistance Plan.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you again for having me.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Looking in the company.
We waiting? Okay.
I was just kind of blown away when I seen that.
Okay, so good morning. The first thing we have is twenty twenty-five dash oh four Annual Resurfacing Group Three, which includes Deco, Legion, Tamarack, Upchurch, Foxboro, Maywood, and Redmond. We had three responses. Anderson Columbia was low at one million, one-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-forty-six, forty-three. So I'm requesting a motion award bid number twenty twenty-five oh four to Anderson Columbia, total bid amount of one point one-six-seven, seven-forty-six, forty-three, and to approve the agreement.
So move.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next item is twenty twenty-five dash oh five Annual Resurfacing Group of Group Four, which includes Ring Court, Hudson, Green Ridge, and Rossy. We had three responsive bidders where Anderson Columbia low. I'm requesting a motion award bid number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash oh five to Anderson Columbia for total bid amount of nine-ten, two-ninety-six, sixty-three, and to approve the agreement.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next item is how do you supplement your red light maintenance? So this is your annual supplement. This is twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Traffic Signal Maintenance and Compensation Agreement and Resolution twenty twenty-five R fourteen attached. Reimbursement will be one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four-hundred-seventy-five dollars. This is a supplement for your thirty-eight intersections that we look after every year. So I'm requesting a motion approve fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement and Resolution twenty twenty-five R fourteen.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay. The next item is your Comprehensive Safety Action Plan Two. For quite a while, we've been talking about dangerous intersections and improvements to curves and things of that nature category. I promised y'all that we would come back with a plan. This is your plan. Mr. Vincent Spar, who represents Kimley Horn, so we hired Kimley Horn to do this study for us. I'm going to ask Mr. Spar to come up and go through his entire plan for us, then I'll kind of follow up with your comments. With that, Mr. Spar.
Thanks, Commissioners. Yeah, so we came to you back in, I believe it was September, for sort of a kickoff open house to get this project started off. It's been, it's been a ride. We've, we've found a lot of good data, had a lot of good public interaction, and I want to share with you kind of the, the process we went through and the results that we've come to. There is a, about a hundred and ninety-three, two-hundred-page report that, that the county has, and, and I think it was circulated with y'all, has much more detail about the things I'll go into today, but I'll talk a little bit overview of that, and then feel free to ask questions throughout, and I can answer questions about anything we talk about here or about the plan itself. Big picture, this was funded through the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, which was funded through the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed a few years ago. It's a USDOT grant program through FHWA that is really focused on safety. It's on, there's, there's two big buckets of funding. The first for development of these comprehensive safety action plans, and the second is for implementation, which is the design and the construction of those safety countermeasures that we identify in the study. The safety program circulates around what they call a safe system approach, which considers we want safe roads, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe people, and good emergency response. It acknowledges that humans are fallible, we can't fix everything, but we should do everything we can to build the infrastructure, establish the programs, educate the, the driving public and the walking and the biking public about how to be safest on the roadways in an effort to reduce the number of fatal and serious injury crashes on our network. The grant was awarded to Columbia County in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, and adopting this safety action plan will make the county eligible and, and all of the municipalities within the county eligible for an implementation grant. So the bucket for each of those, those grant funds was five hundred million each for each during each year over a five-year span. The last year that it is currently funded through is twenty-twenty-six, and that application, the application this year is due on June twenty-sixth, and then obviously there will be another cycle next year pending any changes to that funding mechanism. The implementation grant, as with this grant, requires a twenty percent local match, but turning a, you know, million-dollar investment into a five-million-dollar investment or a four-hundred-thousand-dollar investment into a two-million-dollar investment is the, the benefit there, and, and so hopefully we're, we can leverage some of the local funds to pursue some of these safety improvements at that, that five X rate. And just a quick note here, I'll touch on this a little bit later as well, but every project identified in the plan is eligible. Doesn't have to be priority one, doesn't have to be in the top five, doesn't have to be in the top ten. If it's in the plan, it's eligible for funding. So don't necessarily get caught up on, you know, what's at the top of the list, because if it's in the plan, it's eligible, which is important. Obviously, you know, this guides us, and we hope that the, the, the commitment from the county, or, or if, if there are initiatives from Lake City or Fort White to pursue funding for one of these, you know, we would, we would direct and, and suggest with, from our professional opinion and from the data, go for those top priority projects, they'll make the most safety impact, they'll make the biggest, you know, bang for your buck, so to speak, but it is important that everything's eligible. So the outline per the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, it starts with a county leadership commitment to Vision Zero. So we came to y'all a few months ago, and, and you accepted that resolution, and again, that's just a commitment to say no fatal or serious injury crash on our network is acceptable. We don't, we're not going to turn to some family who just lost a, a family member and say, well, it's okay because we reduced crashes by ninety percent, so your loss is acceptable. We, we understand we may never reach zero, but aiming for it is the goal, and we want to acknowledge that we shouldn't stop short of zero. We should continue to pursue and pursue as many safety improvements as we can to reach that. So step two, analyzing the historical crash data. I'll get into the details of that here, but that data comes from all the crash reports that are filed by FHP, local police, sheriffs, et cetera. Step three is to identify high crash locations. So instead of just sort of broad-reaching general recommendations for here's how you improve an intersection, here's how you improve a signal, we wanted to hone in on areas where we've had historical crash concerns. Step four there is gathering input from the local stakeholders. So we had that open, open house, public kickoff meeting back in September. We came out to the Gateway Fair as well and, and set up a booth and, and shared the project and asked people for input there. And throughout the project, we've had an online database for people to submit safety concerns so that we could integrate those into the report as well. The fifth one there is, is just reviewing local plans, policies, and guidelines, trying to make sure if there are various, you know, checkpoints or, or guidelines that we can implement into local policy to just, hey, let's, let's add safety into this. When we're resurfacing a road, let's consider whether we ought to add rumble strips or restripe with high-visibility markings, that sort of thing. Add, incorporate those things into the, the plans that already exist as kind of low-hanging fruit. And then lastly, recommending specific safety improvements for infrastructure policies, education, and enforcement. So on the crash data side, we did get five years of crash data. That's kind of the industry standard for, for how far back you look from the Signal Four Analytics Database. That, that data includes crash locations, type, severity. You can see there are a few other characteristics that we look at, like lighting and surface conditions. We do want to understand if an area has more crashes occurring under dark conditions, then, then that's a place where lighting improvements could make a real, real big difference. Or if there's an area where there are a lot of pedestrian crashes, we know that, okay, we maybe need to be a little bit more considerate of what, what the multimodal or vulnerable road user infrastructure looks like in that area. So you can see over time there on the right of, of the slide here, the, the crash trend, we had a little bit of a dip there in twenty-twenty, which, you know, may, may sound like a COVID thing, but in a lot of places, we actually saw crashes go up because there were fewer, fewer vehicles on the road and people were flying around. So it is actually somewhat significant that it was down in twenty-twenty here, and then a big jump there in twenty-twenty-one, and since then, it's, it's gone down a little bit, but you can see those, those fatal and serious injury crashes, the fatal, or it says incapacitating injury on here. Incapacitating just generally means someone went to the hospital as opposed to driving away on their own. You can see that those are still up there in the hundred and, hundred and twenty, so odd combined. We didn't, when we did most of this analysis, the twenty-twenty-four data set was not complete. That's why we stopped in twenty-twenty-three. So after we have mapped all of those crashes into a geographical information system database, a GIS database, we kind of tied them to the roads that they are on or, or nearest, and then we rank the, the links, the segments of roads based on a, a measure, a metric referred to as crashes per million vehicle miles traveled. And there's a little example up there just to kind of delineate what that means, but effectively, if you have twice as much traffic on a road that's the same length and, and has otherwise same, same characteristics, the crash rate per vehicle mile traveled on that road would be half of what the crash rate would be on the other road that has half as much traffic. So more traffic, if, if all, all other things being equal, more traffic would equal more crashes. In some cases, and this is, this is how we highlight these segments, we have more crashes even though there's less traffic, or we have a, a very short segment that has ten crashes versus a much longer segment that might have ten crashes as well, that shorter segment is going to be the priority because there's fewer vehicle miles traveled over the course of a year and over five years. So the segment part, we identified twenty-one segments, ten, eleven of them were local roads, either city or county maintained, and ten were DOT roads. We did want to make sure we delineated between those two throughout this process because it allows the county to make strategic decisions about where did your money go? Obviously, you don't want to be out there fixing a bunch of DOT problems. They're still problems, they're still within the county, we do care about them, but we recognize that you may want to direct county local funds to local improvements. We also looked at intersections, so kind of the same process with the, the segments, except for one little quirk here, and I know this table's a little bit small, but that's basically a breakdown from DOT of the societal cost of a crash based on its severity. So a fatal crash is assigned a value of about ten-point-eight million based on the latest data they've provided in the FDOT Design Manual. Severe crashes are a little less than a million, and then they, they trickle down from there. But effectively, what that means is you could have a, a hundred or more of these kind of low injury or property damage crashes before you get to the severity and the societal cost impacts of a fatal crash. So we assigned all of these crashes a, a value, a dollar value based on those, and then ranked our crash locations according to which ones really accrued that highest cost. So ended up with twenty-three high crash locations through that process. Again, some were state, some were local, some were where a state road meets a local road, but we did want to capture all of the, those data points. From that list of twenty-one segments, pardon the, the typo here, the list of twenty-one segments and twenty-three intersections, we reviewed those with county staff and with our task force. I didn't mention this earlier, but we did have a, a task force that was a combination of DOT, folks from the school district, folks from the Suwannee Valley Transit Authority, folks from Fort White, from, from Lake City, from law enforcement. All were part of a, a, a series- All were part of a, a, a series of meetings where we discussed this process throughout with them, asked them for feedback, asked them for locations that weren't showing up in the data, much like we did with the public, to try to get a real comprehensive view of, of all of the, the concerns and how we could, should and could prioritize these locations. So from that list, we prioritized twelve sites. That was sort of the, the scoped amount of, of sites we were able to, to do within the bounds of the, the fee here we had for this project. And we strategically sort of picked those sites to capture as many of the overlapping segments and intersections as we could. So even though we, we have a twelve priority sites out of what was initially a list of forty-four segments and intersections combined, we ended up covering about twenty-five, thirty of those by having some of those strategic overlaps incorporated. For each of those priority sites, we went and did a field review. We, we took a deeper dive on the crash data specific to that site, tried to understand specific patterns there. Like I was mentioning before, like do they have, do they have a lighting issue? Do they have a wet surface issues condition, a wet surface conditions issue, pardon me? And then we assigned countermeasures, safety improvements for each of those priority segments or intersections to hopefully address the, the biggest concerns there, especially as they related to those fatal and serious injury crashes. So just going to go through a couple of samples here from the report. There are, like I said, twelve priority projects or, or priority areas, segments, intersections. But there's I think three in this presentation, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. So this first segment here was priority one on our list. It had the, the highest rate of crashes per million, of severe crashes per million vehicle miles traveled. And it's Tustin Newgie from two forty-two A to US forty-one. So took a look at this segment, dug into the data. You can see here seventy-five percent of the fatal and serious injury crashes were off-road crashes. Someone either going off the road and hitting a tree or a motorcycle rolling over after it goes off on the, the, the shoulder. And then a hundred percent of them happen at night. So again, back to, I've, I've referenced this a few times, but that tells us right away, like maybe there's a lighting issue. Maybe there's something we can do to improve the conditions out here, reduce the incidence of fatal and serious injury crashes by installing some lighting, by being strategic about what sort of improvements we, we utilize out here. A few other things that are good for addressing off-road crashes are those center line and edge line rumble strips. If you have some, some folks going off the road because they're falling asleep or just not paying attention, texting and driving, that sort of thing. Those rumble strips can, can bring you right back, get the heartbeat in a little bit. Some speed feedback signs. Speed is often related to off-road crashes as well. Raised pavement markers, the little kind of bumps you see out there. I think there are some out there. They could use some refreshing. And there's some areas that didn't have any at all. Street lighting is on there as well. And you can see for each of these countermeasures, I know, again, it's kind of small in the report. It's a little bit easier to digest. But we do have sort of a timeframe on there in terms of is this a short-term project or this is something that can be done, generally speaking, with local funds or existing fund, maintenance funds. Those are those short-term projects. They don't require a new budget line item. They don't require a new grant, that sort of thing. The medium term tends to be, you know, this might take six months to two years, might need a budget line item, but, but can probably be done with existing or available resources. And then longer term projects, there's none on this, this specific priority project, uh, priority list. But those longer term projects tend to be, hey, we're going to, we're going to need to either apply for a grant or strategize about how to find funding for this project. It may also require more design effort or, or a, a study of some sort to determine what the, the most optimal solution is. So another sample project was Northwest Long Street from Lake Jeffrey Road to US four forty-one. This one was kind of unique in that it showed up on the list and it had a real high blip of crashes in, I believe it was two thousand twenty-one. Part of when the roundabout was under construction up there on forty-one and this was being used more frequently as a bypass. We didn't exclude it from the data, even though we knew kind of why it had, had jumped up there because we're still being told, we're, the data is still telling us a story about why are these crashes occurring. So again, a, a pretty high frequency of off-road crashes relative to what we normally see. And the fatal crash that occurred on this segment was an off-road crash. So we, while we were out there doing our field review, observed some sort of non-standard signage for pedestrian facilities. So we have some recommendations in there. To standardize, standardize that a little bit more, consider some countermeasures around the, the railroad crossing as well. And some other edge line rumble strips, raised pavement markings, the sort of thing to help with those off-road crashes a little bit. And the, the third sample project I have on here is the intersection of Bascom Norris and Mariethel Lane. Sixty percent of the fatal and serious injury crashes here were angle crashes. Those are crashes where you have effectively a, you know, you've heard of a T-bone. One vehicle's going through and the other comes out and hits them right on the side. Angle crashes, left turn crashes is the other. That's where someone turns left. They didn't have enough space to make that turn. They get hit usually on the passenger side. Those are two of the most severe injury or crash types that we come across. Obviously, your head-ons and your, your rollovers are worse, but of the sort of common occurrence crashes that we do see, these are, they're some of the worst. So obviously that's where we, we dedicated most of our attention. We've got some recommendations on here to consider changes or improvements to help with visibility around the intersection, to slow down vehicles on the approach, to make sure that the stop controlled sign knows, knows that the other, the outside is not stopping. So the folks that are approaching on Mariethel are aware this isn't a four-way stop. This is a two-way stop. We had one or two crashes where the report, the report from the police or, or FHP noted that the driver thought the other vehicle was going to stop. And then last thing on here, we've got a long-term one that would be something where we consider a roundabout. Roundabouts tend to be a, a really strong safety improvement because they eliminate those left turn and those angle crashes that are so severe. Most of your crashes in a roundabout are rear end because I didn't realize the person in front of me was going to stop or go. Or their side swipe, which are, you know, you kind of just glance off your, your driver's side with their passenger's side or vice versa. And those don't tend to be as severe. So roundabouts are a great safety improvement. In a lot of cases, you might see an uptick as people are trying to learn how to navigate it of those fender benders, but from a severity standpoint, roundabouts are, are tremendous safety benefit. So we developed this whole list of countermeasures for those twelve priority sites. And then again, went through another sort of prioritization or scoring mechanism to identify which projects would be the most bang for the county's buck if they pursue, if y'all pursue any kind of implementation funding or decide to, to implement any of them on your route. So the, the different things we considered in there, some was for safety. It was the number of crashes overall, as well as those fatal and severe crashes. Equity was considered because it was part of the SS four A program. So we considered areas of persistent poverty and disadvantaged census tracts based on the data that was available at the time. So that just helps us make sure that some of the funding or some of the scoring anyway acknowledges areas that have been historically underserved. And then public feedback. Did we hear about a specific location from our open house, from our county fair interactions, from the public coordinate website that we had set up? And lastly, connectivity and, and consistency. So if the project, if a project or, or something related to a project was identified in a previous plan, either by the county, by DOT, by one of the city, the city or the town, then certainly the, we gave them some points for that. And then does it connect multimodal facilities? So if we have a, a trail or a sidewalk improvement that connects to already existing infrastructures for, for bikes and pets, we give them points for that as well. And so after, excuse me, after applying those points, we had a, a whole table scoring those out. And this is, again, I apologize, so small on here. We, it is much easier to, to read in the report. But we do have those scored. We have them scored separately for segments and for intersections. Segment, segment scores tend to be higher because if you've got a, a mile-long segment, you're more likely to, to have ten, twenty, thirty crashes tied to that. But they are spread out. The intersections are a little bit more concentrated. So you don't have quite as many crashes there and it tends to, to end up, but you end up, if you don't separate them into two buckets, all your segments go to the top and your intersections go to the bottom. And we don't want that. We want to acknowledge that they're kind of different beasts when we're comparing them. There are three categories. I kind of already mentioned what delineates between a short-term, medium-term and a long-term. But those are color coded on here. I believe it's the, the gray or blue there is the long-term projects. The orange is more your medium term, where it's probably that, you know, budget line item and might require a little bit of a, a coordination effort. And then your green ones are really, they can be done by maintenance. They can be done pretty quickly. It's signs, pavement mark, paint and plastic, we like to say. You can fix that stuff pretty quickly without a whole lot more to do. So taking this project and, and making sure it doesn't sit on a shelf, making sure we're, we're actually making safety improvements and pursuing that Vision Zero. SS four A funding is available through next year. As I mentioned, it does require that minimum twenty percent local match. As was mentioned, I believe, one of, with one of the other presentations, that can be an in-kind match. That can be an in-kind contribution. So if y'all already have funding set aside for traffic calming, speed humps, something that can be tied to safety, it does have to be tied to the project. That can be used for part of your match. You can also use local, local agency program funds, FDOT safety funds, something from the state. The state is not eligible for this implementation grant, but they can be part of your match. And lastly, list of projects within the safety, uh, comprehensive safety action plan are eligible for other federal and state grants as well by virtue of, of being included in the analysis. And that's all I've got. So happy to, to answer any kind of questions and, and help you digest.
Screen right there, you just said, what, what do you say can go towards a match?
There's a lot of things that can go toward it. Any, any, obviously, if you can just come up with a twenty percent match that, that is set aside specifically for that improvement, that's great. But in-kind contributions can be part of it as well. I, I mentioned specifically, if you've got a, a bucket of fifty thousand dollars set aside for, for traffic calming or speed humps or something, that can be considered part of a match. If you, if you know you want to, you know, if we're looking at Tustin Newgie, for instance, and we know we want to, to widen it or add a median or do something along those lines. If there's a million set aside for that, you can turn that into five million with this implementation grant.
Anybody have any questions for the gentleman?
Well, I, I, I know this is to do with that study that you're doing for all our roots. For instance, Kevin and I had a discussion about it. And you have a list of whatever, the whole list. So if we fix something that's in the middle of that list and don't fix something on the top of the list, then the county is liable for whatever happens on that top of that list if you go to a middle of the list.
No, there's, there's, actually, we have some disclaimers in the body of the report itself. But there is no liability accepted by the county, either through your Vision Zero commitment or through this report, that any crash, you, nothing, nothing can be taken as a, a, a absolute promise or commitment to eliminate a crash somewhere, right? That's, that's not possible. And you can't be held to that standard. The, as I mentioned before, that the kind of list is, is one factor. Safety is one factor. As much as we like to say it, it should be the primary factor and, and the scope and the, the way that this report is written, we want to focus on safety and that's the number one thing. But we understand that there are other socioeconomic factors. There are budget factors. There are all kinds of other things that come into play. And so I, you know, I take your example, for instance, and think, you know, hey, we had funding to fund priority six. We didn't have enough dollars to do priority one. So there's no reason you would be held to absolutely go in one by one from the top to make those improvements.
Okay. So that wouldn't have any idea, it wouldn't have an effect on what the county would be liable for.
No, sir.
Going down in the middle of the list.
No, sir. Yeah. And, and Kevin made a good point. We, I'm afraid to mention this, but we did look at every road within the county, every state road, every local road, even some of the unpaved roads. There are some crashes that did occur on those unpaved roads. None of them propped up on the list to, to these highest priorities. But we did look at the crash data everywhere and considered all the, the input we received from the public at that open house, at the kickoff and, and in our online database. If it is not on the list explicitly, it, it just, all that means is it can't be funded through the SS four A program. Again, to the liability point, you, you could still make improvements on another road that's not on the list and it won't affect any, this, the report in that case would be sort of irrelevant, I guess.
But right now with this study done, I know we don't have, I know we got a liability of whatever happens, but this is not putting us in more liability to have this study, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner, you talking about liability if there's a talladega, like a negligent design type issue or something like that?
Was to do with a, not a stop sign or something to that effect going lit up stop sign or whatever.
So, so yeah, so road improvements are generally discretionary decisions made by the board, made in the board's discretion. There are components. There's, there's plaintiff's attorneys who do a pretty good job of articulating to courts and juries. Well, you knew you had all these problems, but you fixed this problem. And, and we're not worried about the accident that happened to the property fix. We're worried about the hap, the accident that happens way up on the priorities list. It's just an issue, but it's very situationally specific. So if there's a, a, a road that needs to be brought up, of course, within y'all's districts, you should certainly bring any issues you have forward. I, he's not concerned about it, but I might have concerns if we allocate maybe a disproportionately large amount of money to something that's not even on the list and leave a lot of these things undone.
Yeah.
So I think that's just, and I think that's, Mr. Kirby and I have had these discussions, Mr. Kraus and I have had these discussions. It's very specific to the facts of the cir, and circumstances of the proposal. So all I would ask is if you're going to bring something, let's all talk about it at staff level to make sure we do that analysis and we feel comfortable so that the board can act without worrying about it.
Okay.
But not only staff level, Joel. I mean, you're saying that project needs to come to the board.
It, it would ultimately come to the board. Yes, sir. I'm, I'm suggesting to Commissioner Phillips and to all five of you, if you've got one in your district and you're like, hey, man, this is a problem for me. I'm getting a lot of complaints, whatever the case may be. Let's unpack it at staff level so that when we present it to the board, the board makes a decision in light of these priorities for potential funding, but also, hey, if we do approve this item that's not on the list, Joel, give us an opinion about whether or not you think that might open us up to liability. And we can do that analysis so that the board knows that when you vote on it. That's all I'm suggesting.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just, I know there is some things that is not important to whatever he's talking about.
Correct.
It is a lot important to some of our commissioners that have to go out here and deal with these people that somebody gets killed in a, in a wreck.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. And, and I wish we could have focused on every fatal crash and every serious injury crash that occurred over the whole five-year period and, and addressed all of them, right? But we can't fix everything. One thing I would note to, to your all's, all's benefit is that you now have, you know, assuming adoption, you now have the safety action plan. You can adopt an amended amendment or an appendix to it at any time. So if there is a safety project that has come up in twenty twenty-four or comes up in twenty twenty-five or beyond and the, the county really wants safety funding for it, but oh darn, it's not on our list. You can amend this, you know, do, do a quick study, evaluate the, the crash conditions out there, get it appended, add it into the list somehow. That's certainly possible and something that FHWA has shown a willingness to accept when, when folks have applied for implementation for a project that previously wasn't in their list. They, they, their board adopts an amendment saying this is now on the list and, and then it's eligible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Vincent. Um, Mr. Chairman, I think that a quote what Vincent said is Bell Road sticks out at me. So this list will change. Like Bell Road was just a dirt road. Obviously, there was not a whole lot going on up there, but now there is. So I think it's the only reason to assume that there will always be changes. But to clarify Joel and I's conversation, and Vincent, I need clarification on this. I move the opinion based on the study we have to say if the board adopts it, we need to focus our efforts on that list before we jump out there unless something changes. Am I correct?
That, that, that's, so that's been my position, uh, Mr. Kirby, is, is once you've sort of through this comprehensive study said, hey, these are your biggest problem areas. If you do jump outside of this list, what I'm suggesting is we need to do an analysis. And it might be an amendment as indicated, you know, what would be the justification? Because again, it's a discretionary decision within the board, but you don't want a judge to argue or a judge to hear or a jury, more importantly, to have the opportunity to hear, well, Columbia County fell down on the job. Columbia County didn't fix this intersection. They instead spent money on a different intersection. And now somebody's been killed at one of these high priority intersections and we're in a wrongful death case. It, it's, again, the question is liability and risk, and that's the only advice I would want to give the board before the board votes. If you do that analysis and you continue to, then the judge is going to have to even be more deferential to you in terms of the separation of powers concept. Well, it was the board's decision to make. They clearly made it with eyes wide open. And that is part of the reason we had this study done. We need the board to have eyes wide open so that when we do have to address a jury at some point, accidents happen, as, as the gentleman indicated. We'd like to have zero. We're not going to get to zero. We're almost always going to have situations where an attorney representing somebody in a wrongful death action is looking for every pocket they can, right? It's our responsibility as stewards of the public money and the public treasure to make sure we're insulating ourselves against claims. And the way we do that is by this risk assessment, by making sure, again, eyes wide open as we vote. Because again, these things might happen ten years later, right? We just need to have record. And that's all I'm saying to you. We've got really good record now. We've got a great study that Kimberly Horns done. They've given us a lot of good insight. If we're going to go outside of that, let's just make sure we do it carefully.
Sure. Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, so what is our plan moving forward with this? Are we, is our next step to apply for a grant or?
I, I believe you're going.
And what kind of grant? How much do we apply for?
That, that's what this is. So this sets the table for you to be eligible for some of these different funding pots. And because these projects are on this list, you will decide the priority as was indicated, you know, just because number one might be the most dangerous, it might also be the most expensive and the hardest to fix. So you guys are going to have to balance those considerations. How much do you want to spend? Which projects can we do in kind for our match, things like that. So you're still, the board still has the authority to decide all this, and that is the next step is to.
And I'm not worried about the authority as much as I am, how do we apply for the grant? How long does it take to get these grants? And do we proceed with any work before we are approved for any grant?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As it says on the screen, there is funding available through 2026.
Yeah.
So if the board did want to apply for funding, there is funding available through 2026. You just have to decide what projects and you have to be able to provide the match.
So, so my question would be, when do we decide which projects? I mean, June 26th is not a long time off. And how much, how do we get estimates of what the cost to fix these projects?
I would defer to Kevin and the gentleman from Kimberly Horns.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, so let's go back in time. August 1 of 2024. The board voted a resolution, in my interpretation, is try to get this done by 2045, okay? That's what the board voted on a resolution. So that, in my opinion, is your timeframe. So I picked one project, which Vincent touched on, Tuscanugie Road from 242 over to US 41, there by the cemetery. I took his corrective action. I did an estimate on that one project at $2.5 million. If you were to bid that out today, it would be $2.5 million. As indicated, it's a 20% match or some other things. And as Joel indicated, this is the tool in your toolbox that makes you eligible for these grants, with the understanding there is a match. When we talk about matches using state agencies, we, we search those funds, scraps, cops, SIGP, LAP, TAP, there's X amount of dollars, okay? But as Vincent indicated, you've got a lot of segmented roads, you've got a lot of intersections, roughly 45 in totality is what we're looking at. So let's use that theory of two and a half million dollars, and let's say that 50% of those projects are the county in totality, not state, all that good stuff. That's a $20 million number, right? Just a 50%. So I think by adopting this plan puts you in the driver's seat to allow you for grants. Vincent, that's what it does. So that's what the board, if they so choose to adopt the plan, it does present you or position you to be in position for grants. If you don't adopt this, in my opinion, you now have a 40-plus item list that says you have a problem. So I think it would only be wise to follow suit and adopt it. Now, Mr. Chairman, requesting motion to adopt the comprehensive safety action plan.
So move.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. And, uh, before we vote, I, I'd like to add something to that. This is one of the things unforeseen. I mean, we all, we passed that, uh, resolution to do this research. I think this is really good information. I was a little surprised on the, uh, but, but they got the data to back it up. But my point is, is that with upcoming current, I mean, our upcoming budget, with the commitment that we made as a board in 2024, I think it was, uh, this is going to be a serious discussion in our upcoming because the SS4As are available, like Mr. Ford just said, up 26. Then, of course, you know, we're going to be seeking other types of grants, but this is going to be, 20 years will be here before you realize it. And and I know we all live under that umbrella that we don't bind future boards, but, uh, we ought to put a pro, we ought to consider putting a program in place to to set money aside for this because what, what did you just say? Two point what on that one?
2.5 for that one little segment.
That one, that one, okay. So I guess what I'm saying, we as, uh, the governing board, uh, we'll have discussion, I would assume during budget time that, you know, we, uh, like we did last year, we sent another million towards, uh, uh, local paving. And I think this is something to be, uh, everybody to be thinking about because, uh, this, this is a big deal. When you study this plan, I was, I went road, it's, uh, and I know, I know for a fact you're getting hammered on a particular issue south of town. And I know every commissioner's got, you know, some issues there. I, I just noticed something on his report that we got to change at the fairgrounds because, uh, this report's out. But, but that being said, uh, that's just my input, but the, uh, I've got a motion.
Chairman, I, I.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just concerned where the funding is going to come from.
Right.
Because I, I, I said at this meeting last week, and a comment was made that we're going to have to, uh, cut services to come up $200,000. So I, I'm just wondering where, where this leads and what, I, I, I guess David, David is, we got the money to do this? Or where's this money going to come from?
That's all part of the budget process. Um, just thinking about it as we're sitting here, for instance. We have programs now for roads that we want to pave. Your repaving projects, you're already thinking. Do any of those correlate to this list? That would then mean you have repaving money that could be matched with these monies. They may not. I don't know until I go through it. But that's why I think you'll need to have some type of a budget workshop to really look at where you want to focus and where you can get the money to match it. It's, it's not a simple, this money's just sitting there. I think what Commissioner Murphy was saying is just set aside money, like you did.
I guess my question would be the million dollars that we set aside this year for paving. Are we going to have to move that back to this safety program?
Maybe possible.
Maybe the board's decision.
And, and, and like I said, we're going through the budget process. We'll figure it out. That's, that's the big thing, the budget process. We have to take that million to save lives. Take it. Take it.
I mean, because what Stiles has shared with us, I mean, that's, this has got my concern up. There's a lot of unfunded, unfunded mandates coming down from Tallahassee. I mean, just imagine, I hate to even think about budget. If this thing does go past, I'm thinking about next year's budget process. We're good this year, but to come up with 70%, I mean, you know, Admiral Lawrence, I mean, that's, that's ludicrous. I mean, yeah, all of this would be wasted.
Yeah, really.
There, there'd be, there, absolutely, we would have to cut services. And, and I don't want to know if you can do it then, you know, I mean, it's, uh, that, that's a big deal coming down from Tallahassee. Mr. Ford's comments are founded. He, I agree.
So my question would be, what is the, is it, is this an urgent matter? Can we wait to see what Tallahassee does before we approve, approve the, to apply for this or to approve this? I mean, we're, we've got to have the money to do it, is what I'm saying. And you're talking about a 20% match.
I don't think we're, go ahead. I'm sorry, Kevin.
Mr. Chair, I think the logical approach, you currently put four million annually towards your local paving. I think the obvious approach would be if you could not do it from anywhere else, you would reach into that pot of money.
But at this point, we're only adopting this report. We're not committing to a
You're not, that's correct.
$200 million.
You, you are simply adopting the plan.
Right.
You're not committing to anything. This puts you in position to apply for grants. You can so choose not to apply for grants.
But one of the things I just want to point out, and I don't think the, I'm sure you send it to every commissioner, but on the, uh, resolution that we adopted in '24, you know, that was just a commitment by this board that we will, we're, we're going to take a stand to try to make our intersections and our roads safer, you know, with, and that's what led us down this road to be able to get this grant. And then what was our part that we took?
70,000, 70.
I think, I think.
How much?
70.
70.
This was a $350,000 study, 70,000 out of category.
And I think we, we were all wanting something done at intersections. Now we know which ones are really dangerous, and I'm really surprised at some of them. I'm real surprised.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great report. It, it's just, it's, it's, uh, definitely, I think it's got all five of our concerns that, you know, how do you, like Mr. Ford said, how do you fund this? You know, when we, we got a lot of other, uh, issues grabbing at us, and it just seems like every day you turn the light switch on, it's more and more and more. But gentleman stepped up and, uh, it sounded like he's got the answer, so.
I was just going to note for you, things like, you know, looking at whatever allotment has already been set aside for pavement or resurfacing, for instance. You don't have to take that money and put it somewhere else. That can be, hey, when we do this resurfacing, we're going to add edge line, uh, rumble strips. We're going to, um, add high visibility crosswalks or high visibility, visibility landmarkings. Just incorporating safety into work that's already going on is a little bit of the low hanging fruit that will allow you to, you could also then leverage that into one of these other grant opportunities to say, that million dollars we had set aside, boom, and now it's 5 million. And so I, I wouldn't look at it as some commitment that you no longer can spend money meant for something else, as long as it's something on the transportation network. Or frankly, if it's for, uh, law enforcement or education, those are all safety related. So that, that money can be, you know, multiplied through, through one of these grants or, or, or working with DOT for their, from their safety bucket as well.
David, do you fully understand what he's saying here? Or can somebody, can, can somebody lay that out in layman's terms?
I think what he's saying is money you're already spending, you can credit towards these, uh, matches. So you're.
That's what I wanted to hear somebody say.
That, yeah.
Money we're already spending can go to pay for this 20%. That's what I was trying to.
You're not going to budget additional monies, monies you're already budgeting for, for resurfacing and improvement projects. You're just going to tag those and report them with the grant and say, here's what we're doing to match. And he's telling us that could be credit, but.
It allows you to expand the amount of money. If you can apply for these grants and you're already spending the money, it allows you to expand that amount of money available to put into that project. So.
So basically, so basically shoulder work.
Shoulder work, rumble strips, safety improvements.
All that goes in, could go into this 20%, right?
I think that's what he's saying, yes.
That's the way I understand it, yes. So, so basically, we can count all the work we're doing, basically, as safety work on the road right now, is that 20%? Am I correct on that?
Depends on what it is, but generally.
So, so just a normal repaving and safety work, or is, or is rumble strips, things such as that nature safely? I, I'm, I'm, I want to thread a needle here and know what we're doing.
No, no, no.
We spend a pretty good bit on resurfacing, so if every year, resurfacing will pay the 20%, I'd be at, I mean, we'll be in the money. But it sounds like there's more than just paving.
Right. It'll have to be project specific. And if you are, I mean, uh, resurfacing, I mean, you all know, if you're on a new road versus a road that's got a bunch of potholes, it's, there's a safety component to that. We don't necessarily have a, a direct crash reduction factor, so to speak, for resurfacing alone. But if you're including some, um, high friction asphalt, you know, or, or have, literally, I mean, just touch on safety in the description of the project, and it's eligible.
I think the key is going to be a project by project analysis of what can be done for safety and what can't on that project. And then how does the grant affect that?
But what, one thing I'd like to point out is that previously, we, we just awarded these two groups of roads here. And one thing to keep in mind, that four million that we set aside for local paving, 90% of the time, to my recollection, is all within, it's not a Bastin Norris. It's not an old country club. It's a Hudson Lane. It's the Ring Power thing that we should have never got into 20 years ago. You know, that these, he didn't do the study in, on Hudson Lane, nor did he do it in Ring Court or any of them. So my point is, is that that four million, and I hate, you, you know, that's divided up, you know, five commissioners, and that's normally on, you know, our local roads. That's not in this study. And I just want to make that point.
Mr. Chair, if I may, what Vincent's trying to say about site specific, you're exactly right. Our local monies are in there for, to capture those roads that FDOT, our senior partners, historically do not fund. We usually go for scraps, cops, SIGP, on the arterial roads, the big roads, the Tuscanugis, the 242s. Majority of this information up here is on those arterial roads.
Correct.
So what Vincent's saying, if we're out there with our maintenance crews, doing shoulder rumble strips, things of that nature, that can be applied towards the 20%.
That's right.
But that is a minimum number. When you look at what we do countywide, I would not think that's going to be a huge number. I think you'd agree with that. So that's the biggest difference here. You can apply it if it's applicable to that project. Okay? So your four million you currently set aside is for your local road system, not your arterial major collector, minor collectors. The vast majority of this list is your arterial major collectors and minor collectors. Make sense?
Kevin, how realistic is it in between now and we're, I'm just going to take a, the second budget hearing, is it that using the numbers that you come up with, this two, five on this priority number one, with the priorities that they have shared in this report, how reasonable is it to think that maybe the second budget workshop, we could have a number to, to kind of look at?
So it took about two hours to put together one number. So the time is not a problem, but I want to caution everybody. With the volatile market that we deal with,
Yes, yes.
if you'll pay attention to the bids you just awarded, they're all over the place. So when we set a budget.
Everything we do, it doesn't matter if it's water, sewer, paving, a, a, a birdhouse, it goes up 20% in two or three years, everything we do.
And Mr. Howard's work, take that further on these particular jobs you've just awarded. One went north and one went south.
That's right.
Really?
How, how they come up with these numbers, I do not know.
And, and, and look what we're doing on Bastin Norris as we're laying asphalt today. That was seven and change, 700,000 plus over budgeted with, uh, what, about a 20% contingency in that.
40%.
At 40%.
But, but answer your question, Mr. Chair, I can put it, the effort of putting a number on it, that's easy. How real is that number two or three years from now?
This is a big deal, and, 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 uh, this is a real big deal, and we, we, we got to have some, we've already committed to it in the 24, in my opinion, the 2024 resolution. So we got to make some type of commitment to go forth.
Yes. Um, kind of what we talked about in our meetings, um, over the next two budget years, there's a lot of uncertainty. There is very little that's going to be certain. We don't know what things will cost, if supply chains go bad, if suddenly things are not available to be found. So putting specific numbers that are solid is going to be impossible for two years. And then we've got all the stuff going on in Tallahassee. We don't know what they're going to do under our revenues. So all I can tell you is there's more uncertainty than there's certainty. And so we'll do the best we can, but, you know, there's only so much that we can do.
Mr. Chair, if we go to a vote, I'm going to ask Joel, just for complete clarification, make sure I understand this right. By adopting this, this positions the board to pursue grants if you so desire. I also understand it is wise to stay on the list, the two lists, the segment versus intersection, and do not go outside the list without some proper vetting and studying. And I also understand, as the way I understand it, if you do not adopt this, you will not be in position to pursue the grants. Am I close?
Yes.
I think everything you just said is accurate.
I just want to have clarification.
All right. So if we have nothing further, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll try and go straight through these. First one is a Resolution 2025 R15. Because we are requesting to hold a stakeholders' meeting outside of the city limits of Lake City, we have to pass a resolution authorizing us to do that. So this is a resolution that basically says we would like to hold a meeting of a workshop at the college on the 22nd at 1:30 in the afternoon. And it would be a stakeholders' workshop of all these different groups.
This for utilities only?
I believe that's, our intention was utilities, yes.
So this is a workshop for utilities with all.
Yes. We'll put together an agenda.
It's, go ahead, go ahead. I, I thought she was going to say.
This is 1:30, right?
1:30.
I have a photo of that one.
Okay.
We can cancel that one.
I don't know, but they're pretty mad.
And when we say stakeholders' meeting, we're anticipating inviting the Water Management District, DEP, Authority, the city, the town of Port White, uh, anybody who has a stake in utilities in Columbia County.
And I think it's the perfect time myself, as in discussing this, because there's so many moving parts to it that, you know, because everybody's a partner, and we get, we got to come together. And this way, everybody knows what everybody's facing. And, uh, I, I think it's going to be a good, and hopefully the 1:30, I don't know that that's going to be enough, because I think we got a board meeting that night. Is that correct?
No. Our meeting is, next meeting is the 15th.
Commissioner Murphy, you and I have baccalaureate that night.
That's right. That's what, I knew we had something. Okay, okay.
I have to fly to Texas for a graduation that night.
If it goes too late, me and Joel may have to skip out. Yeah, well, I'm in. Yeah, well, I'm in threat on that one. But the, uh, okay, uh, got a motion?
Second.
Okay, I made the motion. You got a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
All right, we will run the appropriate ads and get it noticed. All right. Clicker's not working. Do you want to just go to the next slide?
You was worried about that rural housing meeting.
All right, so the next slide, Budget Amendment 2537, Spring Rural County 911 reimbursement grant. Um, basically, you got the grant, and we want to appropriate the money and accept the grant.
Any discussion? I chair the 911 committee. I'll make a motion to approve BA 25-37.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
This next one, if you want to flip the slide, is similar. We now have a new cycle to apply for maintenance money for our 911 equipment. So we would request that you allow us to apply for this next 911 cycle, and it would be to, uh, basically reflect, refresh. And replace the 911 call taking equipment. And there is no match.
I'll make a motion to accept approved grant request.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
So the next one is RFQ 2025D Public Safety Complex Design. As you remember, FDEP, FDEM, excuse me. The Division of Emergency Management gave you a grant a couple of years ago to consider building a new EM building. They did the design. We've got that design. They came back last year and gave you a grant that said. It needs to be more than a building. It needs to be a complex so that all of your public safety entities are working together. Uh, you did accept that grant. This is actually to allow us to, we're asking you to allow us to negotiate a contract with the top three ranked bidders. So approve the ranking and allow us to negotiate with the top three ranked bidders of PHQ Group Design, North Florida Professional Services, and CRA Architects. Once one is negotiated and we all think it's the best one, we bring it back to you for final approval of the contract and award. Uh, this is a grant you already have. Uh, there is no match on the grant. Uh, we are looking at several locations and where to put it. There was some discussion, do you leave it where it's at, or do you move it to another location? Uh, we are looking at possibly some locations downtown. Um, just because we think it'd be a good location. And if you have any questions, happy to answer.
David, what are you actually negotiating with the three different ones? I mean.
Well, you got the top three ranked. It was an RFQ, I believe.
Correct.
So it did not really, you don't base it on lowest price.
Correct.
So we have to go through, pick the best qualified firm, make sure we're comfortable with it, work out contract negotiations, and bring a contract back to you. So price will be included in our negotiations, but the selection of the firms is based on the qualifications of firms. So that committee felt that these were the three top qualified firms.
So how many applied again?
What was it? Seven? Six? Eight? What's that say? Six.
Who's that one?
So did they rank one number one?
Uh, it's in your packet, yes.
So Commissioner, the, the rankings are as indicated, PQH, North Florida, CRA.
Who is that North Florida professional service?
Some strange group. I've never heard of it.
So when you approve the ranking, staff will attempt to negotiate with the top ranked first. And if they impass and can't come to some sort of an agreement, they can bring back to you, then staff will go to two.
Okay, okay.
So if, if an agreement can be reached that staff can negotiate, then you'll get an opportunity to approve number one. The reason you're approving the ranking is so staff knows. They've got another one in line if they reach a, just a.
I understand. Okay. All right. All right. Anything from the board?
I move we approve the ranking and authorize the staff to be in no negotiations with PQH Group Design and North Florida Professional Services and CRA Architects.
Got a motion? Got a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
So the next one's an interlocal agreement with the North Florida Mega Industrial Park Water Supply with the city of Lake City. That agreement is in your packets. Uh, it is a two-year agreement with the option to extend if nobody, if everybody wants to extend, but it is a two-year agreement. Uh, with the city, the city will provide the potable water and maintain all the publicly owned water lines. The county is providing the consumptive use permit that the water would be charged against. Um, we are also in this upon availability of grant funding, committing to help fund up to 3.5 million dollars. The construction of that water line that runs from the industrial park to the, um. Current Price Creek Water Plant. Um, there's a cost revenue sharing system similar to the wastewater agreement that you've already approved. And the agreement is assignable for so whatever reason, if we get out of the utility business. Our obligations are assignable to whoever we give our utility business to. At that point, you want to go to the next slide? Go to the next slide. So this is the proposed line that we're saying we would build or help fund rather up to 3.5 million dollars. Solid yellow line, not the dotted yellow line. And the next slide, sir. And that is where we came up with the 3.5. It's, as you can see, 3.4 something at the time that Jones Edmonds did that analysis.
So, so I have a question. Chair.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll do them some math. Go ahead.
So. I couldn't help but notice the date on this was 2021.
That is correct.
So this, this plan has been before us before.
It has.
And. In 2021, it was 3.4 million dollars. What is that estimate today?
I would have.
We just, we just heard that it could be 20, 30, 40, even 50% more.
So Jones Edmonds is city's engineer, so I'll defer to the city.
What my question is, who, who funds the rest of this after three and a half million?
The contract says we cap our contribution at 3.5.
So I, I think we need some kind of reassurance where this money's going to come from to finish this project before we commit to a project. I mean, I think we all know that 3.5 million or 3.4 million is not going to cover this project that it was estimated in 2021. So. And second thing, I, second problem I have with the agreement is in two years, say we do something different. Who owns the piping inside the park? There's nothing in this contract that I can see that addresses that whatsoever.
I did raise.
I told you about this earlier in the week, and you were going to get me an answer, and I haven't heard anything back from you about it.
Yes. I did address your concerns with the attorney, and, um. Based on his comments, the belief is whoever owns the land keeps the asset. So if we own the right of ways, there are right of ways, the assets would be ours should this thing dissolve. There is a provision on the, on the dissolution that the party that causes the dissolution. Pay for whatever assets need to be, and I'll defer at this point to Joel.
Yeah, so if you walk away, um, at any time without cause, then you refund the capital, capital investment by the other party. Um, and then the county's capital investment in the water main extension is capped at 3.5. And part of that was, again, with, in light of Commissioner Ford's concern, like, we don't know based on the age of this. So we capped it at 3.5. The city understands that that's the max that the county will contribute towards that part of the project. I think Mr. Brown's probably going to tell you he feels comfortable with that number. But, um, to the extent we could be comfortable, we capped it. So.
But at the end of the day, if the lines are put in the ground, the owner of the ground, kind of like we had with Antimatics Park. We put all that improvements in Antimatics Park, we put improvements at the fairgrounds. When we got out of those agreements, those improvements went to whoever owned the property.
Now, it, it would not be a problem. I, I don't think we'd have any pushback from the city if we wanted to, like, explicitly say that. I don't, I mean.
That's easy to say now. Two years from now, that might not be that easy to say.
And then that's what I'm saying. We could put it in before we even sign it. If that's an amendment that the board wants to see, I think it'd be a very simple provision that says, you know, the parties agree that upon termination, whatever.
Let's hear from Steve.
I'm sorry?
Let's hear from Steve. Well, I got one more question.
Hold on, man. Hold on, hold on. Joel, they need to stop talking ground. Wait, wait, wait. Joel, I need shot. Go ahead, Mr. Ford. Sorry about that.
So we could amend it to just have another line in that provision that says it's understood between the parties that, you know. Uh, infrastructure located within the real property belonging to that entity shall belong to that entity after termination. It's a simple thing. If that's something to make the board feel better. I feel like it's addressed, but it's an easy thing to just add to, to really put a nail.
Put some mervish to it.
Yeah.
I, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
So we just scheduled a workshop for utilities. There is no really rush for this interlocal agreement that I can see. Shouldn't we table this till after that workshop? Unless address all the issues that we've got going on with the utilities? Oh, I mean, I, I just don't want us, there's several things I've got a problem with. One of them is, we know we've already invested around a million dollars in the ground out there for test wells and everything else at the Mega Industrial Park. Number one, if we switch now. And go to a, an alternative plan. Which was presented to us in 2021, which we rejected at that time. Do we get reimbursed for that million dollars? I haven't been able to get an answer for that either. Number two is, which we address the accuracy of the estimated cost and where the other funding will come from to finish it at this time. Joel just addressed the, uh, who will own the piping in the ground inside the industrial park. And, uh. I mean, I think all this is stuff we need answers to before we agree. To a new interlocal agreement. For a complete plan change. That we don't even know where all the funding is going to come from to, uh, to complete this project. I think that should be addressed. And, and the city hasn't even addressed, I mean, the city hasn't even addressed this interlocal agreement yet. I mean, we haven't heard. From anybody but, uh, Mr. Brown with the city.
Well, I, I do want, the, the draft is, is a product of staff on both sides. So what you're looking at is, but you're right, their, their council hasn't approved it. And that's why Mr. Brown's here to kind of address some of the, some questions you might have. In terms of the time consideration, I don't know that there is a time consideration, um, but that may, you know, Steve may have a different take on that. So, yeah, I mean, I, I.
I mean, we just, we just scheduled a meeting, you know, for, to, to discuss all of our. Utilities. I mean, I think before we make any major decisions, we need to have this workshop and, and let's. Let's get all this worked out and the costs and everything else. I mean, I don't want to see us do another knee jerk reaction and waste a million dollars. That's just, we got, we've got to stop that. We've got to get a plan and stick to a plan. And right now, I really don't know what the plan is for utilities in the future for, for the county. I mean, we're all over the board. We're like a fish flopping around looking for a pond to get in.
What I can answer is those expenditures that were spent on the legislative appropriation. DEP says they will reimburse us. We're in the process right now of filing the forms to get as much reimbursement out of that. And trying to finalize all the invoicing up to the point where we now have the draft of the specifications. So before we go out and put it out to bid, we want to go ahead and make sure we get reimbursed up to this point, and that's what we're working on right now. And DEP has guaranteed us that we will get reimbursed. Not for all the expenses that you mentioned, because some of that occurred prior to the legislative appropriation. But we will get reimbursed for everything that was expended through the legislative appropriation. So far today.
What, I'm sorry. What was this expended prior to the appropriation?
Uh, you did the groundwater testing of site one and site two.
The drilling of the.
Test wells.
Where they found the arsenic.
Where they found the arsenic, yes.
So is there approximate number there? I'm just trying to do.
I would have to pull it up. I don't know offhand.
Chairman, I, I have made a request for what the total amount of that money is. I made a request last week, and I don't have an answer yet. So I, I, I really don't know if we know how much we spent out there. Because nobody's been able to provide me that information yet.
We're preparing a spreadsheet. Um, we're going back and trying to verify we have all the data. Rather than give you a spreadsheet that has partial data, we want to make sure we give you all the data that we can.
So Chairman.
Yes.
This is a 3.5 million dollar option. I, I know that he, Steve's going to fix and talk about this. What's our other option?
To go ahead and continue with drilling the wells and running the.
How much money is that?
We have a 5.7 million dollar grant that'll get the water to the site, and we'll have to find money to build the water plant.
Okay, how much money is that?
Don't know. I mean, it's roughly five to 10 million dollars, depending on which options you select.
David.
All right, that's all I need to know.
Chairman, I have a one quick.
Yes.
So when we submitted this grant, this money for this grant, to build this water plant. We were provided with information from, from North Florida Professional Services.
Yes, we were.
That this seven, I think it was seven point something million at that time would build the plant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So now we're up to, now we're up to saying it's going to be 10 million dollars or 15 million dollars. We don't even know.
It's hard to say with construction prices.
So that's my, that's my whole point. This was done in 2021. We have no idea what we're talking about financially right now. To make a decision.
It's up to the chair.
Would be just. I, I, I think we'd need a lot more information to make a decision. And I, I make a motion that we table this till after the workshop. And you and Mr. Kirby or whoever's in charge of utilities now. Bring us an, an accurate estimate of what we're looking at to do this. Because I, I'm not going to vote for something. That I just don't even have a clue how much money we're talking about, how much money we're talking about spending. For an estimate that's done in 2021. It just, it's, it's just, don't make any sense to me. Why we're even talking about something without knowing what it's going to cost.
And Commissioner Ford, just to be clear, you are capped at 3.5.
I understand that, but if we, if we do the 3.5, we're still stuck at a dead end. We're going to know where the money's coming from. If it is not going to complete the project, what are we doing?
Well, the city has to pay the rest.
But have they showed us where they're going to come up with the money or do they, where they have the money budgeted to do it? Or are they going to do it in any kind of services or?
Well, again, to the extent that they're going to operate it, and they're going to be responsible for keeping up all the info, and that's what Steve's here to talk about. But, but again, I, I think, to be fair to staff, your concerns, Commissioner Ford, were ours, right? Like, we don't know how much this might be. We feel like with the appropriations we have from Tallahassee, we could do up to 3.5, so that's where we stop. So, so I just want to make sure it's clear from staff's perspective, your concerns were shared. Like, we, we do know that what you're concerned about. To the extent the city's willing to take it on, you know, that's a, that's their council's concern, and, and, you know, they really do need to pay attention to it.
In addition, it says.
What we was talking about before, though, if the city can't pay for it, is the county on the hook to pay for it from that point on? Because that's kind of what we assume that everything else with utilities. If the, if they don't have the money, then we're on the hook for the balance of.
Well, but this wouldn't be a completed project, right? Like, so there's nothing about this that this is a water, water main.
I understand that.
So, and then.
But our goal is to get water to the park.
Right. And anything beyond that, uh, under the interlocal would be a prod, a product of economic development objectives, you know, uh, economic development agreements, things like. So all that would have to be subject to further negotiation.
And additionally, the contract says it's subject to funding availability. It's not a commitment other than subject to funding availability.
It's always subject to appropriation, but the appropriation process in the interlocal, as it's contemplated with quarterly and annual true-ups. Is that, you know, sometimes we would ask the economic development prospect. Hey, you know, you need to come in here, you want these kind of lines, we'd have to negotiate for that. Sometimes the city's going to want to extend lines. Sometimes we're going to want to extend, but that's going to be variable in the agreement.
It'll be grants.
And the agreement contemplates that it's variable, right? That you may want to locate in the park all the way at the other end over by the water treatment plant. Well, now we got to run a lot of water lines to get to you. You may want to locate right by the spur, you know, or right by the, the, the stubout. So. I, I, I just want to make sure that it's clear, Commissioner Ford. Your point about uncertainty, 100% on point. It is very uncertain. And, and that's why the city being willing to do this. Um, is something that we want to make sure we talk about because it eliminates the uncertainty for us in terms of what we do lay out.
It don't really do it, though, without a plan of action, how we're going to move forward with it.
Right. And that's, I think, what Steve.
I mean, I'd like to see that plan laid out in writing before I agree to.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Steve, if you would, please help clarify some of this with us.
Uh, well, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, um, to address the cost. What we did, because these numbers were from '21, as you referred, um, we reached out to Jones Edmond prior to staff having a meeting. Prior to that and said, can you give us an updated number? Are we still in there? In the utility world, there's a couple of things that goes into those factors. Capacity being one of them. Capacity is directly relevant to the size of the pipe. Uh, the, what, what the plant will put out, what the customer's demand is. So we don't have those, all of those equations. So to ask for a, a solid number is going to be very hard, because if you put, and, and this was a real customer at one time, a bottling plant versus one.
and, and this was a real customer at one time, a bottling plant versus one restroom, your needs are going to be very different. So the capacity for one residential component or one commercial component versus an industrial component, that's going to be all over the place. So as Mr. Kirby alluded to a minute ago, cost going north and south, that, that's going to happen. But we did reach out to Jones Edman and ask them. Also, I would like to, to bring up the fact that the very bottom line in the, in the screen says the total range of construction cost could be 1.62 to 3.46. So we are assuming worst case scenario based on the latest revision. That's what, that's what we're looking at. So, so let's say, for example, in this, in this equation, we are, we are talking about a 24 inch water main, open trench. There is a wetland mitigation factor that's going to have to be discussed here. So let's say we direction will drill that section. Um, uh, let's say for a fa, example, we decide that an 18 inch will work. Those costs would again go down. So there are no, uh, a significant number of, of factors that are going to go into what you're actually requesting. I think we can get in the ballpark. I would also like to speak to the fact that the city of Lake City, um, when we had to have meet with staff, Mr. Rosenthal, our city manager was within there. Um, he has reviewed these documents and he is in agreeance that we want to be the provider out there. Um, kind of what we bring to the table is a water plant to prevent having to build that. The cost and the uncertainty on the county side, I think you guys are in a lot better place knowing that we have that facility in place. We have staffing, we have all of the stuff that it takes to operate it. So the 3.5 million is a discussion point that is very warranted. I agree with you 1,000%. That's what I do for a living is track numbers from the utility standpoint. But in the, in the, in the, in the world of risk versus reward, I think in this factor, you stand to gain more than you stand to lose. We are talking about a pipe in the ground, ownership of it's going to be relevant in that regard. Um, maintenance, in-kind services, there's a lot of stuff that we talked about inside the park. This gets water to that park. We've always talked about it from an economic development standpoint, what does shovel ready look like? That's what this provides. Does it give you a guarantee 100% it's going to cost $5? I can't give you that, no sir, I'm telling you that, I can't give you that. But is this going to put us in a shovel ready position? It's probably going to bring us to the closest point we've been since we've discussed the North Florida Mega Industrial Park. This will put us in a place where we have water and sewer. Um, cost associated with building into it, it's in the agreement. What we do share, to share costs as far as that. Another thing that I think we should, to, to, to factor in this is it also talks about revenues, shared revenues that would go into building this. So there are a lot of advantages. Um, I just want to speak from the city's standpoint that, that we're still committed to whatever it takes to make this work. And these numbers were based on 1.5, 1.6 to 2, to 3.5, but a lot of those factors have to be factored in there as well. So I hope that helps.
And if I may, that, that, you know, when studying this and talking to staff, me and Joe had a conversation. You know, this is the, and as I talked to Senator Bradley, you know, the way that the climate is heading in Tallahassee, we, we don't know if we're going to be eligible to get a 15, 10, $5 million grant to continue this on. The good thing about this is, because when y'all made your trip to DEP, they reassured you that what we've spent us to this day, them plans are not bad plans. We still got that plan sitting on a shelf, correct? That is accessible and usable in the future.
Roughly.
The thing, what caught my attention early on was simply the fact that we can sit here and Jennifer can get a call, but she can't honestly tell nobody today that we're shovel ready, but we're not. That's just all there is to it. But in approximately, I'm just going to throw a number here, 12 to 16 months, we will be shovel ready, 100%. That's, that's the enticing part to me. Now, what happens in between now and then? Does the, uh, the utility, uh, work to take over something like this? That, that, that's all in the future. But my point is, is that we can truly have a shovel ready operation. And this is our fastest route to being 100% shovel ready, guaranteed. Uh, uh, nobody can debate that.
Cheapest, cheapest.
And definitely cheapest because, you know, we know with just some of the mandates that all these commissioners have been faced with this week. You know, I'm going to use that crazy thing I thought was, I thought somebody just pulled my leg, but we're, during this coming budget, we're going to be looking at a two and a half million dollar, uh, a deal of buy a sand to fill up sandboxes. It, it, that, that blew my mind. And that's, that's a big deal. That's a big deal in every, and we all know, all grants come with a responsibility. And, you know, the, uh, we were fortunate to get a couple of grants today that we got no match on. But this, uh, as, as, uh, I, I, and, and Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, we're just agreeing to go forth with this, but the city's got to agree to it also.
The city has not agreed yet. Um, their council would have to approve it, just like you guys are today. Um, and, and the, and, and it's sort of like with the wastewater treatment agreement too. You know, it's, it, it seems bigger than it probably actually is, right? It's, it's an incremental step forward. I mean, people don't want to hear three and a half million dollars as an increment, but it's, it's taken that step. And, and you're getting, as, as Commissioner Ford indicated, you're getting the water to the park. There's still a lot of sausage to go through the grinder to get that park fully built out. Um, I do want to say, I'm sitting over here looking at this. I, I, I think if there is a motion to approve this today, I do ask that you would make the amendment that it's clear that infrastructure placed in the ground belongs to the owner of that dirt. Because I do think that's something, if we're all not here three or four years from now, that does need to be cleared. I, I, I want to agree with Commissioner Ford on that. If the motion's made, I would request that amendment.
When you say owner of the dirt, you're talking about it's going to be in county right away?
Right, if it's in the county right away, if it's in the county right away and this agreement goes away, it should be clear to everybody now that at that time, the pipes in the ground will belong to the county. If they're in the county right away, if they're in city right away or a city easement, then they'll belong to the city, right? So that just tells us all that, you know, if we're concerned about who's going to ultimately own it, we need to talk about the dirt first. Because the city could acquire an easement, you know, in certain areas if they want to maintain, but that's something we can address. So again, while I had the floor, I just want to throw that in there. If a motion's made, I'm not suggesting it would be, I think you already have a motion to table on the floor. Um, I would ask for that amendment.
And again, we built a building at the fairgrounds to house the extension. And they've lived there for many, many years. When we relocated the extension away from the fairgrounds, all that building that we built stayed with the fairgrounds and is fairground property.
Chairman, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
So there again, we have a true-up monthly, annually, where we're responsible for half the money over the cost of what it take, or what you receive for operating it. Do we have any estimate or any idea what that monthly bill is going to be? I mean, obviously, we're going to have to subsidize this quite a bit. I mean, Ellisville's been there 20, 20 something years now and we still subsidize Ellisville daily. So I, I guess, do we have any idea what this yearly cost is going to be to subsidize the city for their cost of operating this? I mean, I, I, I know we have in here that if there's any profits, we split that, but it's also in here that we split the cost also. So there again, we have nothing in this backup material that even estimates the cost of what this county is going to be responsible for each year for this.
So short answer to your question is you're right. We don't have a number. Uh, longer answer is the city's already producing water. So they can calculate a number of what it costs to produce water. They're transmitting water. Because you're talking about relatively new lines, there's going to be very little maintenance costs because the water's already being produced. So that number can be calculated. But we anticipate, in the contract, it says the rates to the customer start at the prevailing rate. So whatever is currently being charged by the city would be charged in the industrial park. It would not be a different rate, they wouldn't charge, so they wouldn't come in and charge an exorbitant rate just because it's in the industrial park. That's in the contract. So if you say the city is at least breaking even or making money on the current water rates they have, there's no reason to assume that that wouldn't also apply in the industrial park.
Okay, well, one follow-up question, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Oh, so everything we've talked about in the, in the past was the city providing a master meter and us buying water from the city. What happened to that plan?
We had started that plan when, uh, Mr. Dial was the city manager. Uh, the farthest we've gotten with that is we have the agreement that you adopted a month ago that creates a master metering system, uh, that there will be a master meter, that any water that goes into the park has to be metered. Uh, Steve talked about putting a master meter there at the end of this line that he's proposing to run. Um, but there has not been a discussion of buying water from the city. Well, there's been discussions, it's never been agreed to.
That's why I say again, this is premature to have this on our budget today without all the answers. And, and my, my next question would be, if we're, if we go back to buying water from the city, why would we not bill for the water and be responsible for our water lines inside the park? And the city just be responsible up to that master meter? That's the plan that we've talked about for the last couple of years that I can remember. That's what we agreed on at the meeting when we agreed to let the city annex the park in if they would provide us a water meter. There was never any discussion about all this other stuff.
So I think this grant, Joel can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that's precluded by this agreement. It does say the city will provide maintenance because we don't have a maintenance group. But I don't think that's precluded by this agreement. That would be something we would have to have additional conversations on. What do you think, Joel?
So what, what, I got one question. One follow-up question. So do we get any credit when we true-up for the city selling our water?
Yes.
Yes.
What is that?
You get 50% of the profit or 50% of the loss? Under this agreement.
Correct.
But we all know there's not going to be a profit for a while.
So the, 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 where, where you can address deficits, as, as David indicated, is paragraph 12 talks about rate adjustments for the park itself. So that if we're running a significant deficit over two or three true-ups, we can have a rate adjustment to try to recoup wherever our deficits are. The distinguishing factor of this agreement versus, you know, just buying the water at the property line and handling everything within the park is we don't have to staff for that. We don't have to have maintenance folks. We don't have to have people checking for leaks and meters and things like that. So that's really what this is about, that distinguishes, uh, buying the water in bulk, which we could do. Uh, we'd still need this extension, if I understand correctly. We'd still need a three and a half million dollar extension. But this agreement provides for the city to have more responsibility within the park as the utility's operator. Whereas if we buy at the property line, we have to be the operator inside. So that's what would distinguish this from that.
So are we not doing that in Fort White and in Ellisville right now?
I, am, are.
We're maintaining Fort White and Ellisville right now, water.
I'm not saying.
So you're saying we don't have a department? I, I don't understand that.
No, I never said that. I said, that's what distinguishes these two arrangements. If you sold bulk water, you would be the operator inside the park. If you do this agreement, the city's the operator inside the park. I didn't say we couldn't do it or we didn't have a department. I just said, that's what distinguishes these two arrangements.
Right, right. I have, I have a motion on the table that I would like to postpone this till after our workshop.
Ms. Chair, you need to call for a second, see if there is one.
Got a motion on the floor, anybody for a second? Not seeing or hearing none, uh, declared. I guess that motion dies for a second.
It most, the motion dies for lack of a second if there's not going to be one. And then the floor is reopened for another motion.
Okay, so the floor is open for a motion. On the proposal as it stands?
If, if I could, Mr. Chair, if that's going to be the motion, if I could have that requested amendment, the amendment should state that, uh, the parties understand and agree that any infrastructure placed in the ground will ultimately be the property of the owner of that real estate. Some of that effect, but.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In addition, conversations between Miss, me and Mr. Brown, if you're going to amend the contract, which is great, uh, we would request that the true-up not be monthly, but maybe quarterly, simply because of the billing cycle, you get the expenditures one month and you build the next month and the revenues come in 15, 20, 30 days later. So doing it monthly isn't, you're going to spend more money than it would provide you something of worthwhile.
I move, we approve interlocal with the amendment that the land, the water line, wherever it is located, the people that own the land are the ones that it goes back to. Is that what, is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir.
Are the ones that will own it in the end if something goes wrong. Is that enough?
Do you also want to include the quarterly rather than monthly?
Oh, and then do a quarterly, uh, true-up instead of month. Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Got the second. All in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed.
And boy, I just like to add, I'm not against this. I think this might be a good plan. I just think we need all the answers before we proceed with something like this. I don't want to see us jump out there and waste another million dollars.
And, and Mr. Ford, I, I, I think this takes us to a step. I don't think it gives us into a hardcore, you know, where we'll take the chance of spending another million dollars selfishly. Uh, I feel committed that, you know, of course, you know, Steve's, uh, you know, and me and Steve and all of us can be gone, but, but I think we're setting forth a path here to where, and my biggest thing is getting that place ready like ASAP. Because, you know, when all this, uh, stuff changes in Washington, you know, we're, we're sacrificing right now. There's no telling what's going to happen out here at a place like this. This thing could blow up in our face, uh, to a positive manner, but, uh, I'd hate to, I heck be knowing. Nationally, it's coming our way, but locally, it's, I was just spending, uh, 30 something minutes over there explaining to us that, you know, we got problems over, you know, 110 miles away. And, uh, so it's just, uh, but, but Mr. Ford's right. You know, we, uh, we got to do what's right for everyone. Try to make the best decision we can, but Steve, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
Moving on to number 11, David, where do you go?
He's trying to run out the door. He's kind of listening.
Sorry, I had to get the right slide up on the screen. Um, okay, the grant agreement you just talked about says that we will commit to getting grant funds for $3.5 million for that water line. Doesn't say what grant funds we're going to get. From what I've heard from different commissioners and what I'm hearing today, is there some discussion about wanting to modify the existing legislative appropriation we have? If the board wishes to do that, I need direction from the board to direct me to do that. So I'm asking, do you want us to look for new grants? Do you want us to go back and get a modification of the existing grant? I need your direction.
Well, real quick in the 30-second overview, for benefit of the, uh, the, uh, people in the crowd, share with them what you learned at DEP in Tallahassee.
So when we went to DEP in Tallahassee, they said they are willing to do the modification as long as the legislature says it's the same intent as what they adopted. From what we know, the legislature pretty much will feel it's the same intent because the intent is to get potable water to the park. So if you vote to modify it, we'll proceed with trying to get that grant modified. If you vote not to modify it, then we'll come back to you with the specs for what the existing grant is to go out to bid. So the really question is, do you want, which way you want to go?
I mean, I, I, I thought it was pretty.
Yeah.
I, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve requested, requesting a modification of the grant. I'm not looking for another grant. As it says here on the recommended motion. So you got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Look forward to three slides. So the next item is RFP 2025B, Comprehensive Plan Services. That's the one you talked about the other day. We did reach an agreement with Kim Lee Horn. They are here, I think, still here, if you'd like to come up and say a couple of words. Uh, we negotiated the price to, um, what it shows, 278,000. And it's going to be, I believe, 18 months. And, uh, if you award the contract, we'll get started.
I'm going to approve agreement, RFP 2025B with Kim Lee Horn for $278,000.
Got a motion?
Aye.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, you're returning.
Well, I just want, no, no, it had nothing to do with the motion. I wanted to, uh, uh, remind you guys that the LDRs that are going to come through this process are yours. So it'll be 18 months, maybe up to two years. So it'll be 18 months, maybe up to two years. When you get invitations to participate in the process, please do. Because a lot of these are going to be policy decisions that determine how the property, how land gets used for the next 25 years in the city. So this, we always talk all the time about how, God dang, why does that LDR say that? Why does that LDR say that?
This is way overdue right here. Yeah. And I'm sure people planning the zoning be sick of the death. You got your handful.
Yes, sir. We're excited. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
You live locally?
I'm actually Jacksonville, sir.
You might ought to get you an apartment because you're going to be real busy.
I actually really liked the drive-through. The other night home, we saw a bunch of deer. Thank y'all. We really, we're really excited to start and it's an honor.
Thank you.
I think they're probably going to be burning up the Zoom meetings.
Say, I don't think with Zoom meetings today, you don't have to worry about all of that.
That's right. That's right.
So the last item on the agenda, you talked about the TDC issue. You'll see in front of you on your desk, something that was drafted yesterday by Saz and reviewed by Joel this morning. It's a resolution opposing the TDC elimination of the TDC. So the question is, do you want to approve that resolution or not?
I move that we approve it. And I probably want to prove that we don't support anything right now that they're doing. Move that we approve House Bill 1221. That we approve opposing House Bill 1221 and all the rest.
There's a specific resolution, right, Joel?
Yeah, it's a Resolution 2025R-16, Commissioner.
Okay, I approve.
You want the attorney to read it into the record?
Go ahead.
I don't mind.
2025R-16.
Build up my appetite a little bit more here. Resolution 2025R-16, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, expressing opposition to House PCB WMC 25-02, AKA, AKA House Bill 7033, related to the use of tourist development taxes. Whereas on April 21st, 2025, an amendment was filed to PCB WMC 25-02, House Bill 7033, which seeks to remove all authorized uses for the tourist development tax other than to be used for the purposes of reducing the average tax levy within each county by the amount of revenue received by the county from the taxes imposed in the prior fiscal year. And whereas the fiscal year 2023-24, Columbia County received approximately $2.2 million in tourist development tax revenue. And whereas according to the latest estimate from Visit Florida, the economic impact of tourism is $200 million with 2,800 jobs. And whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, the board has levied the tourist development tax for many years and has in place a defined tourism plan which relies on the use of this funding source to accomplish the planned goals. And whereas the proposed changes to the allowable uses of the tourist development tax will adversely affect the residents, businesses, and visitors of Columbia County, Florida. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, that the board respectfully opposes PCB WMC 25-02, House Bill 7033 in its current form and requests the Florida Legislature to amend the bill to keep the current tourist development tax the way it is attested by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida.
So moved that we do not approve of that. Whatever it is.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed.
And I, I want to say one more thing. I want to make sure Steve and him dates are notary there and some witnesses when we all sign.
Okay, this time, uh, staff comment, no, open public comments. Anybody from the public dial? No, I don't want to say that. All right, staff comments, anything?
I do have one. Um, we are going to plan a workshop for just after the first meeting in June. That will be typically in May, we do the workshop with the department heads where they present to you what the changes they see happening on. We're going to move that to June, but also that will be the day that we present the preliminary assessment studies. So you'll get the studies and can talk about what you like or dislike or want to modify on those assessment studies. We may need a second date, so just keep your calendars open and we'll try and solidify everything. Oh, and there's also a four o'clock workshop before the next board meeting. Four, 4:30? Four.
Misses, Joel, you have anything?
No, sir.
Ever?
No.
Younger?
Good today.
Okay. Robert?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, so David, this workshop we're having on utilities, what, what are we going to be discussing in this workshop? I mean, what, what is this workshop for? I'm, I'm just at a loss right now what we're doing and why we need this workshop.
The workshop really is a stakeholders workshop of everybody that's involved in the utility issues in the county. So it's DEP, it's Swanee County, it's just to, so we kind of, everybody sees the big picture. Because right now, everybody sees little bits and pieces.
That is going to be interesting, the big picture. Because I don't, I, I'm at a loss too for that.
Commissioner, on staff level, when we talked to the chair about this, the Fort White situation where there was a lot of back and forth, well, such and such might do this, such and such might do that. And my observation was, well, let's have them in the room. So there's a lot of willingness to do this. The, the, the discussion earlier when y'all adopted the resolution was it was only Columbia County. It's not. It's Swanee County, it's Columbia County, it's the utility authority, and it's each of the municipalities. So we're going to invite Branford, we're going to invite, uh, Fort White, everybody. And we want them all to come in and sit in a room out there at the college and take the floor and say, these are the things we're working on. And the hope is, and I helped Commissioner Murphy with the letter, is that through that we'll come up with three or four new partnerships, right? Like somebody will say, oh, we can help you with that. Or if DEP, I know DEP is very concerned about sewer at Fort White. And if they start hearing some of the challenges that Fort White's confronting, maybe they'll come with some ideas. So it's really intended to be collaborative, right, and supportive to, for the whole region, really. Not just, you know, Columbia County or just Lake City or whatever. You know, it's really intended to be regional.
It's, it's just been my experience in the past, if we don't have, if we don't have agenda items to discuss, everybody just sits there with their mouth shut.
So, so the letter that's going out.
We don't accomplish anything.
Right. The letter that's going out says each of the stakeholders will have an opportunity on the floor to address their relevant projects. And it's, and it's asking them to come ready to do that. So I understand where you're kind of not clear on it. It, it is clear when you see Commissioner Murphy's letter exactly what they're being asked to do. And so they come, they get educated about other people's projects and they educate everybody else about their projects. And then hopefully by the end, you know, like I don't know what's going on in Live Oak or Branford right now, but we'll find out, right? And so will DEP, so will the district, so will DOT, everybody that needs to know will hear.
It does seem like, you know, it's just one of them deals because something that could be going on as an example. Because, you know, one of the things that kind of got me excited was we, we're Columbia County, also Swanee County. You know, they're our partner in this North Florida utility. So, you know, wholly, me and Mr. Ford, we represent Columbia County, but, you know, and of course, we interact, and I'm not saying Swanee County doesn't, but, you know, it's, it's time that you, but it, and when you say stakeholders, they're bringing people from the community. I've already had one, uh, developer at Swanee County, you know, exactly, I'm kind of hearing, what, what's a stakeholder's thing? And I, I, that's a, that's a word kind of pull there, but it makes sense. I mean, it kind of puts the public also in view of what hopefully, because I mean, here we are, and I'll go ahead and say while, uh, while I'm talking, uh, you know, myself, David, and the young lady that's assisting Swanee County, you know, due to their manager being, uh, you know, out with illness. You know, Mr. Ford appointed us to, to do the negotiation for, you know, the director. But, and he did, he does the same thing I would have done and, but we didn't, he didn't realize, and we sure didn't realize. I, I just didn't, you know, we could, we had to negotiate that and bring it back to them, the board, in the sunshine. I thought, and I just made the call. I said, hey, this wastes of time because, you know, I didn't want to bring a recommendation back and then, you know, they're already, they're going to already, they're going to hear. We need to get out of the negotiation before Rocky be getting a call, you know? And, and it's, uh, so I said, man, this wastes of time. So collectively, us as a board, now we got to negotiate, you know? And they'll see where we go from, you know? And I think it just, uh, it's just, it's weird, the world we got to live in and work in at this point, but hey, it is what it is. Nobody made a mistake. It's just part of it. But I thought that's what's neat about stakeholders thing. Bring everybody in and we may get something accomplished. I mean, when I first came off eight and a half years ago, I had one, you know, big stakeholders thing, if you, if you want to say it, at the college. And we, we got the ball rolling, but, you know, I ain't saying it's perfect, but we got something done.
So what we hear from DEP, what we hear from the Water Management District, as we move forward, more and more things are going to be moved on a regional basis. So when you talk about utilities, funding, grants, all that stuff, they're going to be looking at regional. They're not going to be looking at small projects. And we will have to put together an agenda before the meeting. So you will get a copy of that when we put one together. We have not yet had an opportunity to put together an agenda.
All right. Is that all right? Kevin, you have anything?
I'm good.
Clerk? You've been all quiet.
He's thinking about his cows.
I'll move to adjourn.
I was adjourned.